Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Wareham Planning Board for Monday, December 12, 2022. We'll get things started tonight by having our roll call. Sherry Corrigan.
Here.
Mike Baptiste.
Yeah.
Jane Gleason.
Here.
Sam Corbett.
Here.
Carl Schultz.
Here.
And the Chair, Michael King, is here. We have a full board. Preliminary business approval of the meeting minutes for November 14, 2022, and November 28, 2022. There was a couple of small revisions, mostly typographical. I do have the revised copies with Jane for signature. I got it.
Okay.
I got it late. It was just, it was a couple of very small typographical things, if you're all right with that.
I'm not. I didn't see it.
Okay. All right. So you can.
You guys can, you guys can vote. I'm gonna vote against it. I'm not gonna read it now.
All right.
I think we're gonna hold off on the vote.
Okay, we'll hold off on the vote then until you had a chance.
Sherry sent her comments in. I sent comments in. I'm sure it's funny. It would have been easy to just send us all a copy.
It would have been. Didn't happen.
You guys, if you guys are satisfied, don't hold it up on my account.
No, I, I've read it, but if you haven't read it, then I'm not comfortable with us now voting on it. Okay, so.
I didn't, I didn't see their minutes. I think it's more like a transcript.
It is getting close.
Larger. At the end, I've seen, you have two pages.
We, we need to have a separate meeting on what we want for minutes, because you and I are not on the same page.
We need to have something that all committees do the same.
I agree, and we got guidelines from the Select Board, and it doesn't meet even that guidelines from the Select.
Don't disagree. It's a one different.
Entertain a motion.
Aye. Entertain a motion not, not to vote on the minutes.
Right.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mike Baptiste, seconded by Jane Gleason, all in favor on not reviewing and approving the minutes for 11:14 and 11:28. Say aye, Sherry.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jane.
Aye.
Say, Carl.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. That's where they belong. Seven dash twenty Borrego Solar Systems, twenty-seven Charge Pond Road. New Leaf Borrego Extension Request. Is there somebody here to? You know what? I apologize. I'm gonna take something out of turn if you don't mind. I, I think it's gonna be quick, and I don't wanna keep them here for what I think is gonna be a lengthy discussion tonight. So I'm gonna jump down to item number four, two dash twenty-two, three Kendrick Road LLC Minor Modification. Air Tank Map 108 Lot 1006C, the crumpet manufacturing facility.
Thank you. I'm Bill Madden from GF Engineering. Thanks very much for taking me out of order. It's a small request for a slight project modification at three Kendrick Road over in the industrial park. I put together a half a dozen or so plans just to show, orientate yourself to the site. It's not very complicated. I just wanted to make sure everybody's
Not a good share.
Is available to us before the meeting?
Should we tell them to take this?
This sketch that shows the meat potatoes of what our request was.
Okay, we didn't, we didn't get it. No, but I, I didn't get it. Okay, please hand it, not, not your fault. That's why I asked if you submitted it before that, and you didn't.
Could you let us know, Bill, when these were made available to the office? Roughly?
Thursday.
Thursday. Okay, thank you.
That first eight and a half by eleven, what the applicant or the the client would like to do, there's, there's a need to install two five hundred gallon CO2 tanks as part of the process in the baking process with the crumpets. Those were, that was not identified when we first started the project, and the contractor building the, building the work asked us to come before you to, to make a determination as to whether or not this modification would be considered a major modification to the site plan. So there's two small concrete pads with a five hundred, with two five hundred gallon tanks. They're four feet in diameter, ten feet tall. They store five hundred gallons, thereabout, of liquid CO2 for the, for the process. So we need to show that on the plan. So those two little squares on that SK one sheet that I gave you, it's the very first one on the three or on the four, SK one. They show two pads with circles on them. The circles represent the tanks, the pads represent the
Further pads. Where's the other pad? Oh, these two things, I suppose.
In the second sheet shows what were the original design was. So that area was effectively a, a small grassed and landscaped area, sloped down to a loading dock. So the second piece of paper that's attached with the red cloud on it shows what you folks approved at the, at the planning board meeting. So now we'd like to take that area and put two twelve by twelve pads there and two five hundred gallon tanks. The third sheet shows the, the orientation of the tank on the, on the pads, what it would look like, gives the dimensional criteria for the tank and what have you. The, the fourth sheet that's there, we just showed the CO2 tanks on a floor plan, just drew them on there by hand to show where they would fit with respect to the, with respect to the building. The tanks are gonna be shielded from view as, as viewed from the east. The westerly facing portion of the building on Thatcher Lane will screen those tanks. And the existing building facing Kendrick Road will screen those tanks from the, from the Kendrick Road side of the site. In fact, that shaded area that's noted as tenant area, that area is a little bit taller than the other area, so it's more than ten feet and ten feet in height. So the third sheet shows a building elevation, the south elevation, those two tanks, you see a rectangle that's drawn on there by hand. Those are two tanks in a row. That's where the tanks will be with respect to the building. The loading docks are immediately to the right. The existing building is to the left, and that's, that's pretty much what the, the request entails. They're moving along fairly well with the project now. They're probably, I don't know, probably gonna be looking for some inspections from Charlie at some point in time on things, but that's what our request is. We think it's kind of minor in nature. There is area there, small concrete pad, chain link fence around the structure, around the tanks. There'll be bollards placed around the tanks as detailed on the plan to prevent any, anybody from driving into them. And really, that's the, the long and the short of it. To change to the plan, we're obligated to come back and inquire with the planning board for determination as to whether it's not significant enough to require another hearing.
Has it changed the, the drainage at all?
Did not change anything. All the drainage will run off that slope into the loading area and down, and it slopes from that loading dock down to the drainage basin that's on the, that's on the end of the parking lot. So everything that everything that's in that area will go to our drainage basin.
What's the height of the tank?
Ten feet.
Ten, four feet above that six foot fencing, although the fencing has chain link on top of the, or it has firefly on top of the chain link.
Yes.
Except another eighteen inches or something.
It's on an eight, eight inch thick concrete slab that'll be flush with grade.
Has it, have you touched base with the fire department at all about the, the presence of a thousand gallons of compressed liquid?
I have not. I'm happy to do so, or the contract, I'll check with the contractor, pro construction, to see if they have already done that. It's non-flammable, it doesn't.
Yeah, but it's still technically a whole lot of compressed something that if disrupted, you know, could pose an issue. I would, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I'd feel comfortable with Chris Smith or somebody from the fire department weighing in and just getting their insight.
Something from them tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Through you to the planning office, Mr. Buckland. Mr. Buckland, are there any relevant bylaws that speak to placement of gas tanks or tanks on zoning? I haven't read the bylaws, because I didn't know what the, the issue is.
I'm not that aware, not that I'm aware of.
Well, we, okay, I need to, to, Mr. Rowley, are you aware of any bylaws that speak to the placement of a thousand pounds of compressed air within any zone or?
Not a worthy thing in the zoning bylaw, no.
Okay.
It's, it's a, I believe it's a fire department issue. Anything of that nature would be, it's a public safety issue.
Okay, so, but there was nothing in the, the bylaw that speaks to use permitted or prohibited use or?
Not that I can recall, just off the top of my head.
Okay. Through you to Mr. Madden, other than the, the, it's thousand gallons of compressed liquid, any other safety issues that we need to be aware of? I mean, if somebody runs into it with a car, it'll, it could explode, anything else that?
Well, it, it, first of all, it'd be virtually impossible to run into with a car with eight inch diameters, Schedule forty steel pipe bollards that are four feet apart across from things, so that it's not likely to occur there, a puncture or something on the tank, that wouldn't be likely either. And, you know, where it is, just compressed CO2, not a flammable
Right, right.
gas at all. The pressure regulator that's on the discharge side of the tank before it enters into the building, I think that if anything were to, to occur there, that has a fail-safe switch to a fail-sway, fail-safe valve that would just isolate that tank from the distribution piping inside the building.
Okay, thank you.
Could you confirm with Chris Smith, when you talk with him, that a thirty inch man gate's wide enough and not thirty-six? Just a minor detail.
The, the, the gate that's detailed by the gas company?
Yeah.
Jim?
Minor, minor modification, in my opinion.
Sherry?
Nothing.
Mike?
I agree with Sam.
Jake?
I think knowing that the fire department's okay with it is probably a good idea.
Carl?
I'm gonna abstain, because I don't know what the bylaws say.
Okay. I, I, I would have to agree with Sam and, and Mike and the others. I would consider this a minor modification, but I, I would absolutely like to see something from the fire department stating that there's no concerns that we're not aware of. As far as the, the virtually impossible statement, people will find a way.
Understanding.
You know.
People run through the front door of an Apple Store. Nobody thought that was gonna happen.
Yeah.
The bollards were there, would have never happened.
That's true.
And you see those, I mean, you see them more and more being a
Right.
You know, a, a site feature that didn't exist like
Right.
even five years ago, three years ago.
Yeah, so I, I would, I would, like I said, I, I would say if we can just get something from, from the fire department that says that they have no, no overwhelming concerns about these being added to that particular site, that location, then I don't, me personally, I don't see an issue with it. You know, you guys have done a great job with this site, you know, as far as making all the changes and detail and everything that we suggested right along. So having said that, I would entertain a vote that we consider this a minor modification with the condition that we get a letter from the fire department stating that they have no safety concerns.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All those in favor? Sharon?
I'm gonna abstain on the same basis as Carl.
Mike?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
As I said, through no fault of the applicant, and I appreciate that, I hadn't been given enough time to review the application, and I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. And the Chair votes aye. So we got one, two, three, four, two, zero.
Four, zero, two.
Four, zero, two.
Okay. To answer Carl's question on storage facilities, there is a, a line in in those only bylaws for storage facilities.
And does this comply?
Uh, no, it does not, because storage facilities are not allowed in in any district.
How, well, this isn't a storage facility. This is a manufacturing facility with storage of a product that they need in the process of manufacturing. I, I wouldn't consider this a storage facility.
I wouldn't either.
Hence, the reason I'm not prepared without having time to review the bylaw and.
Again, this is, this comes up several times, you know, these were in the hands of the planning office on Thursday. We never saw a hide and a hair of any of this until tonight.
So Charlie didn't have, you haven't had a chance to comment.
I haven't even seen the plan at all.
Here, you're, you're welcome to have a, a copy.
Last day.
Do you want it?
You can take it, you can keep it, we'll frame it.
Yes, you've already voted, so.
Okay.
I, I agree with Carl. I'm voting no on anything that comes in, like the last continuance, last meeting. We have a policy. We should enforce it. That particular project I'm voting no on. They violate our policy. They get, they, late, late Monday morning, they ask for continuance. I'm, I'm done with them.
Who's them? Who's them?
Um, those amigos.
Oh, okay, so but.
That was last week, yeah.
Yeah, I know that.
I'm a great, yeah. Keep it up.
I I I I agree, and this last second stuff really does have to come to a screeching halt.
Exactly, I don't care who they are.
Bill, you're all set.
There is storage container accessory as well.
Alright, so you're killing me here.
That's why I don't think, I'm I'm. It's too late, Mike.
No, it's not too late, we can take a vote to rescind the vote.
No, but I meant, uh if.
This is supposed to be easy, what what section are you talking about?
In table three thirty. Accessory use regulations. Storage container accessory.
What page in the violence?
In section three.
Page fourteen.
Yeah, you've got the table on your thumb.
You know, he gave the page number.
And the definition of storage facilities is uh uh on page twenty one. Definition of storage facilities is any structure that is used for storage of inanimate objects or organic objects.
Where do you see that? I'm on page twenty one.
Under three forty point uh nine.
Which doesn't exist from here. Page twenty.
Well, this is subject.
That is used for storage of inanimate objects or organic objects continues for temporary construction activities should be limited to forty foot containers. Prepare, must be associated with open building permit.
Doesn't that refer to a building, a structure?
That is used for storage, yeah, I I still, I I still have to agree with our initial assessment of this. I I don't consider those tanks a storage facility, and I don't consider this this project a storage facility. I I I think you're, right. Okay, no, I'm gonna. I'm gonna stick to the vote as taken, thank you, Bill.
Good, Bill.
Your time, much appreciated.
Alright, thank you for your patience of letting us jump to that and getting that out of the way. Uh preliminary business agenda item number two, seven dash twenty, Borrego Solar Systems, twenty seven Charge Pond Road. New Leaf extension of time for a special permit.
Hate to ask this, but do you have the letter we submitted last week as well?
I do.
Can I put two copies into a record, do you need one too?
No, two fine.
Sure, um I think you guys recollect, we're here at your last meeting.
Excuse me, if you could identify yourself?
Yeah, sorry, Jared Connell with New Leaf Energy. We were here at your last meeting and you folks had asked us to review some materials that um you posted to the. Plan planning site and they can distribute it to us afterwards and uh update our decommissioning bond amounts. Uh we've done that, Greg uh submitted that to your office last week. Uh it was a short two-page letter along with the new decommissioning bond calculations for each project twenty seven charge pond and one fifty to hundred. The logic and everything for the new um bond amounts are detailed out in I I across fourteen or fifteen line items there in the exhibits of the letter.
Excuse me, are we gonna treat these as each separate or as one?
I would like to treat them both as one subject matter, only because it's the same context that applies to both projects.
Yep.
Uh I've had time to read this and and digest it, um it was nice that we had it a week ahead, thank you very much. I'm not gonna start because I have. I have a lot of comments and that I wanna make, but I'm gonna give the board the chance to weigh to weigh in first. Sam, would you like to comment on the letter and its contents?
In light of everything we've been given the last couple of weeks. The decommissioning scares the heck out of me. And the letter from Charlton. I think we need to do more work on that alone before I feel comfortable, before I feel comfortable going forward. It's just the numbers that we've been dealing with are miniscule compared to what's out there. I think we'd be doing the public a disservice if we went forward without reviewing the decommissioning, that's my main concern. I have other other concerns, but that's my main concern with not just yours, all of them. After we got into it, I started reading more and reading more and there are numbers out there that are crazy. It looks like we're crazy low. But that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Carl?
Um, uh just a follow-up comment, I I did see your note about the Charlton letter. Um and I appreciate that, that was um sent to you. So you're aware that this this issue was amplified in our mind, I agree with your um analysis that it was not. Uh in any way um substantive in terms of proving. But it led us to having more concerns, and I thought it was important that you be aware. Subsequent to that, uh we did find a a document from the national, what was it, Cherry, the national. And rel.
Renewable energy lab.
Which is, which is a sub sub committee of the federal government that did provide. Calculations that in the range of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars per megawatt. Um I don't know if it's been posted yet or provided, but so anyway, I appreciate your comment on um Charlton. It was not provided as as defense, it was provided to make you aware that the concern is coming forward. Um so I appreciate that comment, uh I did review your plan, I do did note that you um made adjustments. Um and we're still struggling with what's the right number. The other comment I wanted to build on was um. I think when you were before the board at the last week, last meeting, uh I made the statement that as long as it wasn't. Abandoned in the middle, you know, wasn't really our, it wasn't gonna become our problem, was it was your problem. The more, the more that I find about the amount that decommissioning may cost. That it's likely possible that a that a a project gets all the way to the end. And the um the the operator, who may not be you twenty years from now. May not have your financial wherewithal, may get to the end and say, it's just too expensive to decommission, collapse and go away. Um that's that's the uncertainty we're dealing with, so it's not even, I'm no longer concerned about just in the middle of the project. But if 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 everybody gets to the end of these and it turns out it's massively expensive. Uh that's what I'm struggling with, so I just just. Wanted to acknowledge that, so we're all kind of struggling with that, it's twenty years in the future, none of us really knows.
Yeah, they talk about. Recycling, there's nothing on the books, there's nobody really investigating that that I've been able to find that. They're working on something that will be able to recycle the panels. Everybody mentions that, but it's not happening and I don't see it happening anywhere, somebody starting to come, saying, I'm gonna figure out how to do this. It could happen. But what if it doesn't? That's what everybody said, recycle, recycle. It might happen, but it might not. I'm sorry.
Sharon?
I I would say that I agree with the comments that have been made, I have taken a little bit of a look at this area. Um it's a new one for me, but it's a new one for everybody, it turns out. And I think the uh the tricky thing here is that very little is known about decommissioning and what the costs will be. And uh what what the sheer magnitude of the panels that will need to be disposed of or. Addressed in some way will be, and with this project, um it looks like there could be twenty thousand panels. Uh headed for the uh uh the Wareham uh disposal station. And uh we don't know whether they will be considered to be hazardous waste or not. At that point, or whether in fact they will be hazardous waste. Between this and the other projects will have an enormous amount of uh waste of some time or type or another. That we don't really have our arms around at this point. And uh I look at this um this issue and, you know, I worked in the utility business and. We used to have a saying that the utility business or energy business has a tendency to build the problems of tomorrow into the solutions of today. And uh I feel like um we're in danger of that and that we may be facing. An issue that is a bet the town issue, not just because of this site, but because of the accumulation of sites. And before we get into that territory, I I share Sam's deep concern. Uh that we uh not put our town in a position where it's in financial peril. Uh because we do something that may at least superficially make sense today. When if we had studied it more and gotten into it more, we would have come to a different conclusion. My my sense is that we need some expert help here. Uh you know, not just on the question of decommissioning, but also on the question of the type of security. Uh that will be secure enough uh to uh make us feel comfortable about the risks. Uh that the town is undertaking, and I'm not sure whether uh you know, a bond, a a letter of credit. Some other form of security uh is necessary. Over time, you know, our um sense of the danger of this may decrease, in which case we can, you know. Take a look at the security and see if we can decrease it, but at this point, uh it looks like a fairly large. You know, potential liability for for the town, and so I would suggest that we. Approach it very carefully and with some expert guidance to to help us through this on on both of those areas.
Thank you. Mister Baptiste?
Technologies one sided, the push is green energy, they don't look like everybody else is saying the same thing. They don't look at the big picture, what happens in the end, you know, they got one focus in mind right now, technology's on a push, that's what they're focusing on. It should be a two-fold mission, you know, from start to finish, you guys just wanna do the start, don't care about the finish. Consider it a cost of doing business and it's gonna come back and haunt us. People finally getting nervous, you know, uh it's happening in the field. You know, team got shamed down our throat, oh, that's the way to go, and they find out there's a problem later on, oh, how are we gonna solve it, oh, jeez. You guys move on to something else, they're just focused on the big picture, getting your project done, I agree with Sam and anybody else on the board so far.
Jay?
Yeah, I could say that I would agree with the people who've spoken before me, um. I I think that when it comes to decommissioning, I would hate to see us in a position where all of the. Security that we put in place with bonds and sureties and uh money and escrow and all of that. Turns out in the long run to be the least expensive option for the owners of the facility when it comes time to decommission it. And so they opt to dump it on the town, let them figure it out, and it's not enough money to cover what actually has to happen. When it comes to recycling, yeah, who knows whether that's gonna happen or not, it needs to catch up with us. Like the recycling needs to be available and that we need to know how to do that, know whether there's a market for it. I mean, those are all risks that are just a little. Larger than I think the town, especially with the cumulative number of of sites that are are coming up. Ten years ago, we had none, now we've got a lot. Um and they're all gonna come obsolete at about the same time, so.
I too. Uh echo the concerns of the board for all the same reasons. I think that um although you've presented revised decommissioning. I think it it's hugely optimistic, to to say the least. The 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 sheer idea of taking twenty two thousand panels to the Wareham Recycling Center in itself. Is insane, I mean, if you take a Google map of the Wareham Recycling Center, it consists of a turnaround in five bins.
I don't think that was proposed anywhere, was it?
Yeah, no, it it I I it was stated in there, I think if you just subtly reworded that. To say nearest appropriate, in one place you said nearest appropriate, and then you went on to re- reference. The Wareham, it it may not even be here twenty years from now, so probably appropriate to take that.
And it's woefully inadequate for the project of this.
Have you guys seen it? It's it's.
One point three five million pounds of solar panel.
Yeah.
Equipment.
Yeah, it it would just, it would just destroy that little recycling center, that that's a small town, go bring you plastic bottles type of thing. For the residents, so that that in itself is, it was an issue for me. That and the fact that they're only open six hours a week. That that's, you know, I won't beat that subject up anymore, but it's it's not, obviously, it's not uh appropriate. The removal of the panels, I did quick math, I mean, you've got it down to fifty eight cents a panel, you're estimating that a worker can take a panel a minute off of the racks. Don't see it, don't believe it. I know, I know how people, and and you're budgeting thirty five dollars an hour. Twenty years from now, if this project goes sideways, we're gonna have to pay prevailing wage, which is gonna be a whole lot more than thirty five dollars an hour. So again, it's it's a, you know, obviously a revision, but I think it's wildly optimistic. And it doesn't, it doesn't help us protect the town, you know, at the end of the day. We have to find that that perfect balance between respecting your rights as developers, respecting the landowner. And respecting the townspeople and protecting their health, welfare and safety, I mean, that's, and and this doesn't do that in my opinion. So.
Mister Chairman, with all due respect, I would like to remind the board that this is a extension of two previously approved projects.
We've learned a lot in two years, what what we knew two years ago is not, doesn't relevant to today.
It's not a discretionary request, though, it's if there's good cause.
Well.
For the delay in construction, then the project. Should proceed to move forward.
Miss Mister Chairman, uh in in response, uh thank you, Attorney S, I I read that, and you know, I was gonna bring that question up. And I was going. I I had informal feedback that that it it is somewhat descri- a a counter, a counter opinion, let's say that. Uh I I would like to request that Town Council. Um we you give us guidance on, is it discretionary, because if if you're right and it's not discretionary. Our our hands are somewhat um tied, we need to work with you to to get to the best solution and and we're grateful that you are working with us. And if in fact it is not discretionary. We need to find the limits of that and and move forward, however it is discretionary, then we'd like to continue working with you.
And I I did, I I did read that chapter.
I I didn't, I'm not a lawyer, so I didn't.
Well, what I took away, and I'm not a lawyer either, I'm not, I don't even play one on TV. What, the way I read it was. Your your interpretation of good cause and my interpretation of good cause may be two different things. And there's nothing in that chapter that states that yours is right and mine is wrong or vice versa.
That's correct, I mean, if you decide that the information we've presented is not good cause for the delay and presumably, you know. Primarily that's based upon utility uh study that we were loop uh pulled into. If that's not deemed as good cause in your opinion, then that's that's your decision, but that is the scope of the decision, I you know, appreciate that. We'd be happy to talk with Town Council about that as well.
That would, that would help me, I I appreciate your position and and. Uh I I and I'm gonna make an editorial comment, I think the state and federal government has put us all. I I and I'm going to make an editorial comment. I think the state and federal government has put us all in in a very difficult position by rushing ahead with this. The the infrastructure is not there, which is why you're waiting for the Plymouth study.
Regulations.
The regulations are not there, the guidance to us.
It's not there.
And every town is struggling with this independently. I'm sure you've been before other towns and they're asking different questions and making different different requests. It shouldn't be that way. It's it's not that.
Yeah, it's put us all under the gun.
It's an editorial comment.
I appreciate that. And as you can see, just by the the change in the estimate from two years ago, there's there's a lot of recognition of changed circumstances. Obviously, we've had pricing pressure on a number of line items that have gone into it. So, you know, one of the things I just want to make clear is that we are committed to continue to post the right amount of decommissioning estimate over time as required by the.
And and your 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 willingness to to continue to meet with us as as that that's that's great. I don't know where where does that leave us?
Mr. Chairman, I I would say the definition of good cause has more discretion in it than than simply deciding whether the rationale for for not having begun construction yet is your fault or not. I I think there's enough room in there for us to look at the circumstances. And I am afraid that our town administrator would not look well on us if if we were to go forward with the amount of potential peril here for the town without taking a really hard look at it. And we don't know where that look is going to put us. I mean, we may end up agreeing with you. But, you know, I think it's the the sense of this body that a hard look is is necessary.
Yeah, warranted for sure. I agree.
I don't want you guys to think that you've got an inflexible counterparty here and engaging in some sort of a peer review process to review these numbers and arrive at a new number. I just I do think it is it's a separate and unique issue from whether or not good cause has been demonstrated here. And the way that the initial permits were issued, there's a great condition in there that it requires the bond amount to be updated, I think, every five years. And we also proposed in our last letter, I know you didn't get it before the last meeting, but to engage in that even prior to that and engage with the building inspector now to update it ahead of the five-year increment. So I don't think we're going to go back and forth on the line items here tonight and arrive at, you know, a meeting of the minds on each of these line items. But however you want us to engage with experts or third parties or peer reviewers, we're happy to take that as a condition. We're just looking for acknowledgement that good cause has been demonstrated here on the initial approval.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And and that, you know, that was another thought that I had is we go forward and the way we have our agreements now is is every five years we review the decommissioning plans for possible revisions. So we, for whatever reason, say we reluctantly accept the numbers that you have, you know, and say, oh, well, we can review them in five years. Well, now you've got tens of millions of dollars invested in the project. It's up, it's running, it's doing what it's supposed to do. Five years comes around and we look at the numbers and we say, all right, these numbers don't don't work for us anymore. We need to increase them by threefold. And you say, no, not going to do it. Where's where are we? We still have a solar project on our property that could potentially be abandoned. We still are facing decommissioning costs.
It's on private property.
You know, I'm I'm sorry. We have we have a solar array in our town that could still be abandoned. We could still be on the hook for the decommissioning. And we have no way to enforce you with revising the decommissioning fees five years from now to meet what our requests are. We don't have any teeth for that. And and, you know, we have a hard enough time getting a pair of dumpsters in town moved, much less something like this.
That was that was the main reason on the thought of our offer last time to do an update now as a condition of getting.
And I appreciate that. And and for me speaking just for myself, this update's not it. This it it's just not realistic in my eyes. And again, we do need help from professionals of some sort on that end of this. But I think as far as tonight's business is concerned, I would have to agree that we should refer this to Town Council for opinion as to what exactly our responsibilities are concerning the phrase good cause and whose version of good cause makes the most sense in this situation.
Just so I'm clear, what's the relationship between good cause and the decommissioning bond amount?
Nothing. They're two separate things. But your 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 attorney is here asking us to give you an extension based on the fact that you're demonstrating good cause. And I'm saying that I don't feel that his version of good cause and my version of good cause meet. And that we would like the town attorney to weigh in on this so that we make the right decision.
Understood. Okay, thanks.
Before we before we take a vote on that motion, I have a question through you to Attorney Sampson. As as we know, ownership ownership of this project has changed. And and as I speculated, it may change five more times before the end. I'm going to ask you to make a comment as a lawyer, just to, and and I understand it. How do agreements like this carry forward when ownership changes?
So the approval that the town issued is binding on successors and assigns. It's recorded in the registry of deeds. It runs with the land.
Oh, it it goes with the land. So even this kind of agreement goes with. Mr. Buckland has told me in the past, some things go. So this would go with the land as well.
Correct, yes. And in this case, the ability, the ownership change is more of a it was a not really a sale, it was a restructuring.
In this in this case, it was, but in it could be in the future, a sale or. So I'm just trying to make sure. So if we do, if we whatever conditions and approvals we make, it goes to the land. How does that, if it goes to the land, affect the owner? Should you guys all disappear? What what are the owner's obligations if you guys all walk away?
I mean, the town, the owner would have obligations, the town, to remove illegal use at the end of the term. They would, town would have the ability to go to the owner and demand, you know, recourse. There's the private landowner. They can't keep an illegal use on the property once the, you know, term of the permit has expired. It's an illegal use.
Okay, so that's another recourse available to us. Do you think the landowner understands that risk?
I mean, the the landowner is, in in fairness, the landowner has just as much incentive to make sure everything is removed appropriately as the town does.
Okay.
So that's one one reason. Under the lease that we have the landowner, those obligations exist. They're very detailed. The requirements for restoring the land at the end are are in the lease. And I, you know, I I do appreciate the concerns of decommissioning. I will say, you know, I did a lot of wireless permits for a long time and that had similar concerns about decommissioning and the bonds for removal of towers and antenna. And, you know, I do think we can look at that as an example of over time with the way technology has changed. We weren't, you weren't abandoning equipment on towers. You weren't leaving towers abandoned in the woods. You know, you've become reliant upon the the wireless infrastructure and and things do get upgraded over time. So I and I I'm not saying this to to, you know, try and sway the opinion. I understand the concern about having that conversation. I just think it is it is a similar situation that, you know, it's it's not always the problem that we are concerned today is going to be in the future because things can change. So, you know, I understand why the town's concerned with this. But there are examples where it hasn't materialized into a, you know, a real issue for towns in particular.
That's good to hear. It's just that a a tower in the woods is a whole lot less disruptive than tens, you know, of acres of solar arrays. It still, yeah, it still is recyclable.
So, uh, so.
I think unfortunately, we have to make our decisions based on worst-case scenarios.
Correct.
Because if everything goes well, you know, at the end of the term, the security will go away and everything will be fine. And unfortunately, we can't look at the world that way. We have to look at it. You know, in the event something goes wrong or something goes terribly wrong or the industry changes completely. And, you know, we've seen tremendous upheaval in the energy business over the years, and we don't know where this is all going. So.
Yeah, yeah, things can change at the drop of a hat. I mean, just ask anybody that owns a coal-fired electric plant. They're not happy right now.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we request that Attorney Bowen, Town Attorney, provide us advice and counsel on the good cause. I'm making a motion. It's not a public hearing.
Correct.
That Attorney Bowen provide us comment, advice and counsel on the good cause condition that Attorney Sampson refers to, as well as what is the limit of our discretion in this decision so that we we act appropriately. And that's that that's that's my motion.
Do we have a second? We have a motion by Carl Schult, seconded by Sam Corbett. All those in favor of having Attorney Bowen weigh in on the guidance, so mentioned it in Carl's motion. Say aye.
Sure.
I'm going to vote aye, but I want to say also that no matter what he says, we need advice on decommissioning.
Commission.
And on security for decommission.
But but not necessarily from him, right?
Right.
No, but well, maybe on the adequacy of security, he might have an opinion on that. But we need advice on decommissioning costs and scope. Aye.
Or do we want to add his counsel on security informs of security?
No, or I don't know if we want to get that deep into it.
That's fine. Thank you.
Keep it clean.
Mike.
Decommissioning and for twenty years out. Just saying.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Carl.
Uh, aye.
And Chair votes aye. Six zeros, you know. Thank you, gentlemen. We are going to consider.
I have two more comments on Tahoma.
Okay.
Before we move forward. Are you aware there's a large problem there with lead? The first, when you get to the, go through the village, come to the clearing, that was a rod and gun club for about fifty years. There was a rifle range and a trap house, which they used trap every week for years. Rifle range, pistol range, it was used for years. So there's got to be some protection for the water below that. The water below that, the stream, is one of the most important herring runs in the area. And you have lead up the hill and a herring run down here. Need some sort of protection for the fish. They're very important. To hone a pond is very important to the herring run. They spawn there. There there is very few of them left compared to five years ago. You need to look at the lead situation. I was a member of that club. That range was used every weekend. Or I don't know, forty years, fifty years. So there's a lot of lead there.
Okay, thank you. So the conversations that have just taken place, I am going to make a motion that they carry over to agenda item number three, nine dash twenty Borrego Solar Systems, one fifty Tahoma Road. New leaf extension of time, special permit.
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Mentioned by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Sure.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jane.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Carl.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you very much for your time.
When would you like to see us again?
That's going to depend on Mr. Bowen's schedule. That being said, and this being the holiday season. Can we shoot for shoot with the twenty-third with the understanding that Mr. Bowen is kind of kind of driving the bus on that, us making that date? January twenty-third. No, December twenty-third.
No, no, I didn't know if he meant like February or March.
No, I think I I I think he can weigh in on this far as by then. So January twenty-third?
Be great.
All right. No, no, there'll be no public comment on this this evening.
It's not a hearing.
It's not a hearing. It's discretionary, we were told, though.
Mr. Chairman, I'll try to get a meeting scheduled with Town Council immediately.
Okay, just keep in mind, Ken, that I'm gone from the twenty-third through the first of the year.
Right, that's why I want to do it immediately. And then try to find somebody who has who has expertise in decommissioning, even though there haven't been that many decommissioning projects done at this point.
Oh, no, we're building them all.
Right. Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Great.
Next, next on the agenda. Continued public hearings, thirty-three dash twenty-one Wareham PV One LLC Site Plan Review, zero Route twenty-five, map one fifteen, lot one thousand, ground-mounted solar energy generation facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike. The mic.
She's looking at that. Okay, the floor shows.
Great, thanks very much. So let me just introduce who we have here. John Clavens, counsel for Long Road, the applicant. Sarah Eba from VHB, who you know. And Matt Thornton, who's from Long Road as well. And then with me to my left, who you know.
Sure, Attorney Robert Galvin. I represent David Fletcher, who's the property owner.
And we have various folks available on Zoom to answer questions as needed.
Okay.
So when we last left off on November fourteenth, we had a number of open items. We followed up promptly by submitting a number of additional materials on December first. So I submitted a a letter responding and updating the board on a number of items. I'm going to go over some of those things from that letter shortly. We also tried to respond to the board's concern that items that had been submitted hadn't been posted to the website. So we made sure that everything we submitted was posted. And thank you very much, Mr. Buckland and Sonia Reposo for helping us do that. We also worked with Ken and Sonia to make sure that all previously submitted items that for one reason or another hadn't been posted were indeed posted. So I think we're in really good shape there. One of the items we submitted on December first were revised site plans dated November sixteenth. So drawing your attention to those. And we have hard copies for you and a blow up here to refer to as needed. Really no substantive changes at all. We had made one change to respond to Fire Captain Smith's feedback received the day of the November fourteenth hearing. Now you have in paper electronically a site plan that reflects his feedback. And by the way, you also have to the board and posted in the board's website. I think it's now two letters. I think it's now two letters and one email from Captain Smith. Saying and saying over and over again, he's reviewed the November sixteenth plans and is satisfied. Uh, you asked us to put the correct revision dates on every sheet of the plan. Um, that was an oversight on our part that's been done. There was a question about what a deer fence would look like. And we added a photo of that toward the back of the plans. For your convenience. Uh, we submitted a further revised decommissioning plan on December first. The. Bigger substantive change had already been made with the revised plan in June. To remove the salvage value from. The ultimate decommissioning amount. The further revised plan submitted on December first. Uh, updates the language and drives home the point that salvage value is excluded. For purposes of the decommissioning amount. We also updated the decommissioning plan to reflect the current project design. So it included some. Shrinking of the number of solar panels, but also taking into account the battery energy storage system. As folks had pointed out. Uh, we, in response to, I think it was a citizen's comment from Annie Hayes. Who suggested shouldn't there be a commitment to recycling the panels? We included that and included the additional cost of that in the plan. And the end result was a gross up of the decommissioning amount from what was. About two hundred ninety five thousand dollars to six hundred and forty five thousand dollars. And then further grossing up using the hundred and twenty five percent amount from the bylaw. That brings us up to really a very sizable eight hundred and six thousand dollar. Proposed decommissioning amount. So the end result is we think of decommissioning plan and financial assurance amount that goes. Beyond what we think is typical, but what Long Road is prepared to offer here. We understand we've just sat through the conversation that you just had with New Leaf. And we understand there's uh agita about how to approach decommissioning. How do you know what's being done is responsibly planned and estimated? And we empathize with those concerns. We are not asking you to have a crystal ball. So there are a number of protections built in, in addition to what we think are some conservative assumptions. So the no ifs, ands, or buts, annual two percent increase. In between the every five year. Refresh. And then. The the chair's concerns about the board's leverage to. Actually enforce. An increase. Should a five year. Revision of the decommissioning estimate show that it should be more, I would say. That that's what the bylaw requires. The bylaw requires that it be updated every five years. And. Yet there could be a difference of opinion, but just like with any condition. That is a condition, there's a both a requirement of a bylaw and will become a condition of the permit. The board has the authority to enforce it. You know, up to daily fines or potential shutdown of the project. I think carrying very significant leverage if the board is unsatisfied. With the permit holders compliance with that bylaw requirement. So I know Long Road plans to take that very seriously. And we really do think that will help solve this problem that we don't need to know for sure. Today, what's going to be the. Situation in twenty years. There there will be fresh looks every five years. Between now and then.
Thank you very much.
So I also wanted to. Uh, underscore the point that I made in my December first letter about decommissioning and the sequencing here. What needs to be decided when? So. We believe we've met the requirement of the bylaw to provide. A decommissioning plan. But the bylaw doesn't necess doesn't require that. The board have to determine a financial assurance amount. Before issuing site plan review approval. And and traditionally, the board has imposed conditions that. The. Form of surety. Be handled. Uh, as a condition presumably prior to issuance of a building permit. So. That too, at least in the case of this site plan review application, we don't think is a barrier. To issuing site plan approval, subject to that traditional condition. Another issue, I can pause at any point.
No, it's okay. All right, go ahead.
There has been an issue that came up a little bit during the November fourteenth hearing. And then in some emails in the intervening time about. The easement rights associated with the project parcel over town owned land. So we understand that the town administrator. Believes that some additional agreement with the town will be needed. To use that easement between the Fletcher property and Charge Pond Road to install utilities for the project. We strongly disagree. We had submitted a memo along those lines back in July. And back in July, my colleague, my former colleague, Betsy Mason, had noted that the. Easement clearly allowed. For installation of utilities. And there was nothing remarkably different that this project was going to do that any other use. Of that property would have. It would be the same type of utility lines, the same voltage. As if it were a residential home, another solar project, a cranberry farm. All the same. Not willing to rely on our own expertise. We, well, Long Road recently engaged Richard Goldar. Who's a. Very well known title takings legal expert, a lawyer. Whom the town has hired to advise it on title and takings issues in the past. He took a look at the takings order and the taking of the easement in this case. Uh, what this project would entail. His opinion was it was an open and shut case. There's no question about it. No further agreement from the town is needed. Even though we disagree and even though. Mr. Goldar has. Provided us and the town and talked to the town about this. With that conclusion, we are still willing to discuss with the town administrator. The issue and we'd be absolutely open to some reasonable accommodation. But this is not a zoning regulatory issue for the board. Um, and we understand that the town council has advised the town that it's got to keep the exercise of its zoning power. Uh, separate from the pursuit of its business interests as a property owner. One thing we suggested in our December first letter is. If the board is concerned about this, if the board is concerned that issuing site plan approval would somehow compromise its business interests as a landowner. It could disclaim that in the site plan approval. The site plan approval. Does not constitute the agreement of the town as the owner of the neighboring property. For the installation of utilities. So that's how we would propose to address it. We think it's reasonable. We're trying not to be unreasonable. We are. Open to discussions and accommodations with the town as property owner. There was discussion last time. Has been continued discussion of fear of hazardous materials contamination in the groundwater. We wanted to state really unequivocally. That there is no PFAS. In these solar panels. We had taken a look at Mr. Causegro's letter who said he couldn't find a clear statement to that effect. In the letter we provided from the manufacturer in July. The letter says exactly that. And not only that, it's not the manufacturer's word, it's the manufacturer reporting that each and every year. It has an independent organization. Test its products and processes for the presence of PFAS. Um, and each year that's. Validated by a third party to not involve PFAS. We think it's just a complete non-issue. There is cadmium telluride in these panels. And we wanted to talk about that a little bit more. We provided this information in the past, but we just wanted to. Organize it and talk about it in a more concerted way. The the bottom line is it just does not propose pose a significant risk to groundwater for a whole host of reasons. So first is the first solar panels. Which is a multi decade US based manufacturer of solar panels. Um, and Long Road is really excited to be. Using US made solar panels in this case and the recent Federal Inflation Reduction Act. Creates new incentives for. Achieving a certain amount of domestic content. In your projects. So really, it's all coming together for the first time to use. US made. Uh, equipment for these projects, which we think is great. These first solar products contain very little cadmium telluride. And it is encapsulated and very hard to expose. So. What we want you to understand is this material is a semiconductor layer. That's just a few microns thick. Roughly three percent of the thickness of human hair. That's it. It's encapsulated between two sheets of glass. It's sealed with an industrial laminate. It's extremely durable, both over the long term and in extreme weather conditions and fires. These are the only modules, this is according to the company. In the industry warranted against cell cracking and microcracking. One of the independent studies that's referenced and linked to. In the first solar letter we provided in July was done by Virginia Tech in twenty nineteen. They did a close review of how first solar cadmium telluride solar panels performed in actual field conditions. Their conclusion was based upon the potential environmental health and safety impacts. Of these panels across their life cycle. They pose little to no risk. Not only under normal operating conditions. But also with foreseeable accidents such as fire. Breakage. And extreme weather events like tornadoes and hurricanes. Their report even looks at one instance where there was a tornado that caused tremendous damage. To a solar project. But. There was hardly any breakage of these panels. That's how tough they are. Not only is there such a tiny amount. Of this material in these panels, it's extremely unlikely to get released into the environment. And even if it did, there's still no significant risk to groundwater. One thing to understand here is cadmium telluride. Is not cadmium. We've all heard concerns about cadmium being a toxic metal that can. Cause environmental and human health issues. This is a compound, a very strong compound. Saying cadmium telluride is as dangerous as cadmium. It is like saying that water. Is as dangerous as hydrogen. Simply because water contains a hydrogen molecule. It's a stable compound that is insoluble in water. And has extremely high chemical and thermal stability. So will not break down after, you know, before hundreds of degrees of temperature. One of the people we have on hand to talk a little bit more about this is Katie Kudzma. Who's an expert on hazardous material site contamination remediation from VHB. Katie, are you there?
She should be on Zoom. I am, yes.
Yeah. Can you tell us just a little bit about? In the very low likelihood situation where. There was some. Release of cadmium telluride, what that would mean. For environmental conditions.
I'm sorry, who is this?
Katie Kudzma. Um, she's a colleague of Sarah's at the consulting firm VHB. And she's an expert in hazardous material site contamination and remediation.
Good, thank you.
Could she, before she starts in with with her information, could she give us a quick rundown on her credentials?
Sure.
And spell her name, please.
Sure. So my name is Katie Catherine in the long, the long version, Kudzma, K U D Z M A. And I am the Director of Site Investigation and Remediation at VHB. I have fifteen years of experience relative to hazardous waste site cleanup and assessment. I'm also a licensed site professional in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and co-chair of the Legislative Committee for the LSPA Association. I have a bachelor's degree from Boston College in Environmental Geosciences and a master's degree from Harvard University in Sustainability and Environmental Management.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, and one thing I wanted to add to to the prior discussion is that the module breakage is extremely rare. It only occur occurs in less than one percent of modules over twenty five years, which is. A very low figure. It's it's zero point zero four percent per year. So most of those breakages occurred during shipping and installation. Um, so you know, we're not, we're talking about an extremely rare event that the. The modules even are broken in the field in the first place. Um, and so what I did is I had looked at some of the studies that are relative to this kind of thing. And and you know, the likelihood of leaching cadmium to the environment. Studies that are available are not applicable to the real life, you know, application of these solar panels. They show that there is some leaching potential, but they are using study designs that. Are not, you know, not realistic. So they are basically milling up solar films with ball mills and. Exposing them to acidic environments, submerging them in water for one and a half years, et cetera. Things that are not representative of the potential environmental exposure scenarios. And they don't take into account the regular maintenance of solar modules to maintain their efficiency and functionality. So. I just wanted to, you know, take some of those studies with a grain of salt. They're certainly not directly applicable to what we have on hand here. And then I'd also say that a release to the environment in accordance with Massachusetts regulations would require a source. A pathway to the environment and then the measurement of hazardous material in excess of the reportable quantity or concentration in soil or groundwater. And so the source of cadmium telluride is encapsulated, as noted. Damage to the modules is a rare event. So we're then assuming that somehow the cadmium would bleach the soil, which is not demonstrated in studies that represent real life applications. And lastly, even if the modules broke, we assume they'd be picked up and repaired during maintenance. Therefore, there's no reason to suspect that there will be enough time or exposure from cabby and from the modules to impact the surrounding soils. Or groundwater in a manner that would constitute a release to the environment. or groundwater in a manner that would constitute a release to the environment per the Massachusetts regulations known as the Massachusetts, Massachusetts Contingency Plan.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great. And then o- only at that point in the risk analysis, do you get to some of the other information we had provided before? That uh, despite the tiny amount of this material, its encapsulation in durable panels that are, you have very minimal breakage. Little ability for this to um, leach out. Uh, or get in the groundwater in the first place. Even if it did, um, uh, VHB's uh, certified hydrology expert, Mehdi Perry had provided a report to you back in the summer. That groundwater flows uh, away from the aquifer serving the town's municipal water supply. And off-site properties with private wells. There was no waffling in his report. It was very clear. And uh, says the project has no potential to affect private wells or groundwater along Charles, Charge Hill Road. Because groundwater from the site flows east, south, east away from Charles, Charge Hill Road. Uh, which is located north and west of the project. So, and that's only as a very, very final layer of something that is um, not a significant risk to begin with. You could tell we've been obsessing about this. We don't take it lightly. Long Road likes to be known as, you know, at the forefront of um, fighting climate change and being a good environmental steward. Um, we at our firm feel the same way. So uh, as questions were raised, we really wanted to answer them and answer them well. We hope we've done that. Another issue that came up last time was about um, concerns about um, Mr. Fletcher's prior activities on the site. Our understanding is that those issues have all been resolved with the twenty eighteen settlement. Uh, Mr. Galvin can speak to that further. Um, I did lay out, I don't want to belabor it here, but I laid out in my December first letter that um, it's clear from Massachusetts courts that um, e- even if you had concerns about a landowner's prior activities. Even if the landowner himself were undertaking the solar project, it would not be legally permissible to withhold a permit or delay a permit on that basis. But we think there's, there's no issue. So we know that uh, Mr. Causegrove submitted a very long letter to you um, with all sorts of exhibits. And um, uh, I guess off the bat, um, we very much appreciate and respect um, a process that can uh, get robust uh, citizen input. We believe your review of a project and the project itself can benefit from questions raised and information provided by citizens. Um, and with that in mind, we carefully reviewed the entire letter and all of the exhibits submitted. Are we trust that all the issues have been raised in good faith. But none of them should stand in the way of approval of the proposed site plans. We assume that your plan is to allow Mr. Crossgrove to present his points. We would ask for some time after his presentation to respond. That said, we'd like to address certain items upfront to help place them in the context of the issues that we've been discussing already with you. The big picture is uh, there's plenty to chew on in what he has submitted. But there's nothing in the letter that should prevent the board from closing the public hearing tonight and moving ahead to approve the project. A, a number of the issues raised are just simply outside the board zoning authority. But in each and every one of those cases, um, there are other legal safety nets. And Long Road is committed to complying with all of its obligations under all applicable laws. To, just to give a couple of examples of them, um, Mr. Crossgrove says the project's gonna need um, uh, coverage under the federal NIPD's program. Um, this is a program to ensure that construction sites are managed properly. To uh, ensure that stormwater discharges from construction sites don't uh, contaminate uh, local waterways. We know that nearly every large ground mount solar project um, complies with that permitting framework. It's a ministerial process um, that involves compliance um, before construction starts. That's it. He asked for the site plan approval to be uh, either withheld or conditioned on entering into a uh, payment in lieu of tax agreement. Well, this project is gonna have to pay taxes anyway. This, that's not a zoning issue. The physical impacts of the project, the project's compliance with the zoning bylaws are the same. Whether the project pays regular property taxes, pays payments in lieu of property taxes. Long Road would like to enter into negotiations for a pilot agreement with the town. But that's not part of this zoning review process. Mr. Coggrove brings up that there um, should be imposed some sort of joint and several environmental indemnification liability. But not only is that not a zoning issue, it's already in Massachusetts law. Um, the same law uh, Katie just talked about. Massachusetts General Law is Chapter twenty-one E. And it's Massachusetts Contingency Plan, the regulations that implement it already provide a robust framework so that if there's a release of hazardous materials, the person responsible um, can be responsible for investigation and cleanup and responsible to neighboring property owners. It, it, it's already there. Uh, in other instances, the issues raised are just technically or legally incorrect. Um, so for example, he talks about um, needing um, an approved forest cutting plan under the Massachusetts Forest Cutting Practices Act. That's completely incorrect. Um, there is a Massachusetts Forest Cutting Practices Act. It, it's about ensuring environmentally responsible practices in the timber industry. It does not apply to land that is not devoted to forest purposes. Uh, Mr. Fletcher's land is not and has not been devoted to forest purposes. It is not subject to that act. Even if that act did apply, it still doesn't apply when you're cutting trees to build something. Because the act isn't about preserving trees as such, it's about just responsible practices and harvesting timber. I'm not going to go into other details. I just wanted to give you a sense that as you look at each and every issue. There is in fact, nothing that should prevent um, issuance of site plan approval. One particular topic uh, Sarah's gonna talk about, which is um, grading and stormwater issues, um, because they had provided a uh, a report from a Mr. Horstley um, that raised certain issues. And we wanted to make sure we had the time to respond to those um, clearly and directly.
Thanks, John. Uh, I know he introduced me earlier, but Sarah Eba from VHB, the Site Civil Engineer for the project. Um, as John noted, I just wanted to go over a couple of points without getting too in the weeds with the technical data. Um, I'm happy to provide more information if the board wants. But I think a lot of, again, the technical responses have either been discussed or provided to the board in previous hearings and discussions. It's also outlined in the stormwater report that was included, as well as the hydrology memo that has been referenced a few times by Mehdi Perry. The certified groundwater professional. But again, very quickly, just a few points Mr. Horstley brings up. Especially related to the test pits and that stating that they need to be adjusted to appropriately indicate groundwater on site. So the test pits were performed by an environmental scientist, a licensed engineer and soil evaluator from our company. Uh, they do meet the Massachusetts handbook standards of using this prior, um, I'm sorry, the visible soil conditions versus estimating seasonal high groundwater on site. Based on that comment, a lot of the additional calculations that Mr. Horley, Horstley references would not be applicable or required for this um, situation of the stormwater design. We have four to six feet of separation from groundwater to our infiltration basins. He also references Article twelve sixty, which is part of the October twenty twenty-two bylaw amendments, uh, which was adopted more than a year after the site plan review application. We believe shouldn't be applied to this project as they're still under review with the AG's office. That being said, the calculations outlined in Article twelve sixty are related to MS four compliance and treatment of impervious areas. Of which our site has a negligible amount of, again, the panels don't count towards the impervious areas as regulated by Massachusetts standards. Um, and it's just the small concrete pads that we have on site that count towards that impervious area calc. The comment letter also incorrectly states that our design is using outdated data for the rainfall. Mr. Horstley references NRCC, which is not often used in municipalities. It's just another model to uh, estimate rainfall data for the different storm events. Again, our design uses NOAA Atlas fourteen, which is outlined in the Massachusetts Standards and Engineering Best Practice. Again, if needing to comply with the, the different rainfall data, it would have a very small impact on our stormwater design. It would affect the elevation of the control structure, not the size or the footprint or overall design of those infiltration basins. So overall, again, a lot of these comments have either been addressed in previous reviews and iterations of the design based on some incorrect assumptions or interpretations, and others are just not applicable to the stormwater design.
Thank you. Welcome. Any questions you have?
What do you want me to start? I always look to my right. This time, Sheri, I'm gonna give you first, first crack at this.
Okay. Everything that I said earlier about decommissioning, I still believe and believe is applicable here as well. So just want to put that on the table as um, as my position that uh, we don't know enough at this point. Nor am I um, satisfied with the leverage and position that we'll have in the future uh, to make adjustments uh, if we don't get it reasonably right at this point. So that's maybe point number one. Second point, uh, I saw in some of the email correspondence and in your letter, you say that you reserve the right to argue that in the case of large-scale solar energy facility in the R one thirty district, site plan approval under the bylaws is not a special permit. You know, with the meaning of Massachusetts General Law forty A. What do you, I mean, I understand what your argument is on your different interpretation of our bylaws than is our interpretation and has been followed. As far as I know, in every case where we have uh, looked at uh, a solar application, they've all been site plan review special permits. And so you know that we don't agree with you.
Correct.
And so what, what do you mean by this? And what actions are you preserving the right to take in the future?
Simply the right to argue that um, the uh, by nature, under law, um, the site plan review process here is just site plan review and not a special permit process under Chapter forty A, Section nine. While we reserve that right, um, w- we don't think it ultimately makes a real practical difference here. Given the fact that forty A, Section three says that solar projects can't be prohibited, except where necessary to protect health, safety and welfare. We think that a, at the end of the day, um, a special permit, a permit needs to be granted. Uh, whether it's a special permit or not. And the only question is, you know, what are the reasonable conditions to be opposed uh, on that permit? So we were trying to do a gentle reservation of rights. We don't think it really makes a big difference here at this point.
At, at this point, possibly not, but what if you find yourself in the position that New Leaf is in? When uh, you're unable to begin your construction uh, within the time period required for a special permit? And um, are you going to say at that point, well, we never agreed that we needed a special permit. We don't need an extension. We're just gonna go ahead. I mean, what, what does your reservation mean in practical terms? Cause I think it's important for the board to understand what, what it is granting and what you may be understanding from the grant. And whether there may be some uh, prerogatives that the board may normally exercise uh, that you may disagree with at this point.
I, I don't think it makes a practical difference at this point. And uh, i- if you're talking about permit lapse, um, typically a site plan approval also has a shelf life. And would expire. I actually, we've been focused on the standards for grant and not the lifetime of the permit. So I would defer to you and your knowledge about your bylaw uh, on that. So I, I don't think it makes a practical difference um, at this point. I think in terms of um, the uh, legal obligation to grant approval subject to reasonable conditions. Whether it's um, viewed as site plan approval or a special permit gets you to the same place.
So you're, you're focused on today and the, the grant of approval today. What I'm trying to figure out is whether if we grant you a site plan review special permit, are you going to follow our regulations and uh, and our bylaws for special permits? Or are you going to be selective and say, we never agreed to that?
I, 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 I can't see any reason. W- w- what we're trying to achieve is um, a issuance of approval with reasonable conditions and move on with the project.
And I hear that as a no. And I, I hear you saying you're focused on today. And if in the future, the requirements for a special permit, whatever they might be, uh, you, you don't agree with or don't want to go along with, you've reserved the right to object and say, all we wanted was a site plan review.
No. The reason I had put that in the letter was because um, there are um, some subtle procedural differences um, under state law as to whether it's a special permit or site plan approval. And um, I usually like to figure out what box we're in. And uh, it was a little unclear under the bylaw which box we were truly in.
So we, we've said that you're in the site plan review special permit box and you're okay with that. You're accepting that?
I, I, I understand that's the board's position.
Then I hear that as a no then. I, and I think it puts, I won't be voting on this because I wasn't here for the entire hearing, but uh, I think it's, I think it's a problem to grant an approval that is uh, that is not viewed by the applicant as the approval we think it is. I just, um, it presents a, um, it presents a, a problem.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Ms. Quirk. Uh, moving forward with your concern, because I noted that concern earlier because attorney Clavens had raised it. If we disagree and we condition our um, approval based on our understanding, the, the recourse is then it goes to get adjudicated and it will get clarified in court. Is that not correct?
It, that depends on somebody taking it to court.
Well, the, they would have to take it to court if they disagreed with us, right?
They may or may not do that. I mean, at some later point, it actually may end up with the onus I mean, at some later point, it actually may end up with the onus of enforcement being on the planning board.
Okay, I was just trying to understand. I was assuming that if we disagree, we make a finding based on our assumptions. The applicant doesn't accept our assumptions. They adjudicated in court and the court tells us or them, either we interpreted the bylaw correctly or the state law correctly, or they did. And that's where that's our only only option, right?
I mean, that that's one option. What what I would actually be more, I I would actually be fine if that was what was going to go on, although again, it concerns me to grant an approval that is then going to be appealed, even though it is an approval. But what concerns me more is this board, once again, being in a position of having to enforce its bylaws and authority when an applicant declines to go along with it and says, you know, I don't have to.
Let me just clarify. We're not going to appeal a decision that's a favorable decision with reasonable conditions. Let me just make that perfectly clear. No one's going to complain about whether this is a technically a site plan or a special permit if we receive approval with reasonable conditions. So that's that's a non-issue.
So so then our concern is having to enforce our authority with respect to a special permit later on down the road.
But you'd have the same authority to enforce any permit, whatever it is. There would really be no difference.
I I think I think what misses, I think what Ms. Quirk's concern is is being in the position of enforcement. This this board has has learned the the hard way that agreeing to special conditions on a permit is one thing. Enforcement is completely different. And just the the trials that we've run into with really small minute little issues in getting the enforcement taken care of and then multiplying that by a million to get it to a level where this project is is concerning that we would be put in a position where we would have to be enforcing conditions of the special permit. It's an issue for me too. I mean, it took us a year to get two dumpsters moved, I guess, is the easiest way to put it. It it isn't, but it still puts us on the the defense. And and we don't play defense very well right now.
Mr. Chairman, I think the more obvious result of difference between a site plan review and a special permit is a site plan review can't be denied. But a special permit could be denied, and it has a lot stronger position for the planning board in holding on to that denial, which of course they would want to appeal.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baptiste.
Nothing at this time. Just absolutely noise.
Okay. Jay. Okay. Sam.
You've done the best job of anybody that I've seen come before us. I think the location is probably the most appropriate that has become before us. I'm very familiar with the site. I've been there hundreds of times. There's already, I think, five solar arrays in the area. I think Sheracran just finished their installation a couple of weeks ago. You heard the last hearing we had. My major concern is decommissioning. Part of our job is to protect the town. Regardless of who the applicant is, that's, we've learned the hard way that that could be the most important issue we faced with. You know, just in the last couple of weeks, we've had new information presented to us about the decommissioning problem. I think prior projects were not, one did well enough. Yours, to the best of my knowledge, is the best one yet. Doesn't mean it's right. It means it's the best I've seen so far. We're still in the process of trying to figure out what the right way, the wrong way is on decommissioning. I don't know if anybody in the States figured it out yet. That's, there are other concerns, but that's my main concern. I don't dislike your project. I don't dislike the location. I think you all have done a very, very good job. I think we're still working on what to do with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Ms. Eva, of quick information, just a point of information. How many megawatts is this project as currently configured?
Sure, I believe in the application, we say up to 3.5.
3.5. I'm going to use four. 3.5. I'll use 3.5. Just this is an informational. I'm stupid. Hang on.
I hope all the questions.
6128 divided by 3.5. So if I did the math right, your bond, your proposal is 806128. Right? You're saying 3.5 megawatts total? That is 230,493 per megawatt. If if I did my, which is very close or getting much closer to the numbers that we had been looking at. So that's just a point of information to the board. Is my calculation right? Is that, this is the decommissioning plan, the bond amount, I'm sorry. Yeah, and we had the note, I think around 267, and we found another number around 350,000, but this is certainly much closer than what we've seen in the past. And and I'm pleased to hear that. Thank you. I had another question. So that I that was just a point of information. Thank you. I appreciate your comment. Oh, first of all, I wanted to thank the applicant for working to get all the information before us. Some of that was internal procedure. Thank you. That was very helpful. I appreciate that you took the time to do that. I do want to acknowledge that the the version of the bylaws that I've been reviewing for this project were the October 2019 bylaws. I think we've agreed to that all along, which the comment about Article 1260, I have to look at when that was modded, but if it was modded after 10219, then the applicant is right. It's not applicable to this case. We've all been talking about decommissioning. And one of the things I'm struggling with is we can't have perfect future knowledge. And we, I don't, well, I don't want to get into debating the application. I'll acknowledge that we can't have perfect, perfect future knowledge. And at some point, we need to move ahead and make a decision based on what's before us at the time. The other thing I'd like to acknowledge is we've been working and struggling with the applicant, with the citizens. This application, many other applications, things that are beyond the zoning law come before us, and we recognize that we can't necessarily decide on it. But we want to make sure that we've, we've heard citizens, we've investigated their concerns. And we do appreciate that some of it is beyond the zoning law, but we're we're trying to do the best we can for the town and for the applicant. So I appreciate that comment as well. At the moment, I have no other, no other comments.
Thank you. I would have to echo Carl's and Sam's sentiments about the decommissioning. It's much closer, much more realistic than we've seen so far. I I had one little tiny thing that caught my eye, which was the 2% escalator every year. That that's not even going to keep up with inflation, so I don't think that's realistic. I researched a ton of different websites, a lot of them connected to the Fed. And they had, they had figures that were closer to 3% anticipated inflation over the next 20 years. So that would be something to take back. And then in the decommissioning, again, you know, we're wrapping our arms around this and really trying to figure out what to do. That's the right thing to do. I I didn't really see any detail as to, unless I overlooked it, where exactly all this stuff was going once it was pulled out. Has any thought been given to that? I mean, we, the last project we spoke to, you heard, obviously, they were going to send it someplace that I consider to be inappropriate.
Yeah, I think we may still have Joanne Blank available to answer questions about methodology. Joanne, are you there?
I am here. Thank you.
Joanne Blank from Stan Tech, the engineering firm that prepared the decommissioning plan.
Yes, and I've I've spoken to you guys about a month ago also. So in regard to, you know, where the product would be taken, one of the reasons we don't specifically put it in is for the very reason that you were talking about is that, you know, 20 years from now, that would be very different than what it would be today. And so if you think about over the next five years to 10 years and even further on, the panels would likely not be recycled at all. They would be resold. And from 10 to 15 to 20 years, they would probably be donated. But let's just talk about the first 10 years. They're going to be resold, so they would go to a reseller, not not a recycler, although we do include the cost to recycle. So, you know, that's, that's a net positive in in that direction. But that is why we don't specifically say a recycling company because it would, it would be about 20 years down the road before they would ever go to a recycling firm. And things are changing so quickly in the industry. We do figure about a 200 mile radius in our, in our transportation costs.
Okay, thank you. So again, I guess we're faced with the unknown. We really, yeah, we really don't know what's going to come of this.
Okay.
One more question through you to Mr. Buckland, or perhaps to Attorney Cleveland. This is a procedural question. You guys have proposed the decommissioning plan. Can the applicant has proposed a decommissioning plan, they put forward a number for a surety bond. Let's say we close the hearing, that is the decommissioning plan before us. Can we, as part of our ruling, an approval, should it be an approval, condition it on a different number?
You you could do a different number, but you'd probably want to have an agreement by the 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 applicant on that number before you put it into into casted in stone in a in a decision.
Okay, procedural question. And again, could we then, could, how would we negotiate that with the applicant after closing the public hearing?
I think you do it as a condition of the approval is that you negotiate the negotiate the 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 actual number.
Okay, so it's just a process question.
Before a building permit is issued or something like that.
So the the language would have to read something subject to a successful negotiation of decommissioning values.
And a surety supplied that then a building permit could be issued.
Okay.
Yeah, so, okay, I'm not presupposing either approval or what that condition would would be. I just want to know the process. Should we, through our deliberations, identify something that's not in the plan today? So there is a procedure for doing that.
That's right.
And if I make a suggestion, so this board's practice and the bylaw already contemplates the review by town council of the form of surety after the approval is issued. And that's been the practice that's followed in many other municipalities. There's further discussion about the precise decommissioning amount at that same time as well. We've heard through the prior discussion and this concerns about the board's lack of expertise to weigh this. We'd like to propose that there be approval with a condition that there is a updating of the decommissioning financial assurance amount based on a review of a expert of the board's choosing. And ideally, the conversation that Ken imagined is a conversation between the board's expert and Joanne, our expert, to try to really arrive at the very best estimate possible.
And and we've envisioned a periodic review anyway, which could encompass that. I just want to make sure there's a process that we, if we were to close the public hearing, or when we do close the public hearing. It's not.
You can continue the discussion, yes.
Certainly for in pursuit or in absence of perfect knowledge, that's that's my concern. We, if we continue to debate forever, trying to get perfect knowledge. We're debate forever.
I would just add, I'm not sure we're looking for perfect knowledge so much as something that doesn't cause problems for the.
I I used the term perfect knowledge, but yeah.
Okay.
One other quick comment, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Ken's comment about about the special permits, I plan review, I think is really insightful and important. And that is, whatever happens here affects other projects. And I would be concerned about a change or a potential door opening so that solar developers no longer file site planned review special permit, they just file for site plan review and are the level of scrutiny that we're able to give these projects changes actually pretty, pretty completely. So just want to make sure that we don't lose that point. You're you're right.
I I think it's, I I've talked to other zoning zoning lawyers around Massachusetts who've seen a couple of instances of this in other towns of a site plan review special permit, something that sits on the edge. And probably the resolution is just making the bylaw clearer. So I'm stepping up a little bit here.
Point well taken.
Yeah. So when that's.
Preaching to the choir.
Yeah, it's been an ongoing project, trying to make it clearer.
I think the problem in the bylaws that site plan review applies to all uses to which it applies, not just solar. And the site plan review section of the bylaw says it's a special permit. But that can't really be true for every single hazard right use that's covered by site plan review. Your table of uses.
That's, that's what I was going to go back.
Yeah, your table of uses specifies.
SPP.
Exactly. So I think it's probably just clarifying in the 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 site plan review by law that the special permit aspect of it only applies to the SPP designation in the table of uses. And then you're good.
I I understand your interpretation. Yeah, I I think we've got a practice and an interpretation of our own. And over time, we will make the the words better. But for now, we're, we are the planning board and, you know, we get to say what it what it means.
We do. We respect that.
Okay. All right, with no other comments from the board. Do you have anybody else that needs to speak from your team via Zoom or in person?
I know everybody's going to be around so that if there are responses that.
That are required.
Are required, are appropriate.
Okay, well, I'll thank you for your time and your coming to see us and we'll open this, yeah.
Mr. Chair, before we open the public comment, could I request a three minute bio break?
Yes.
Thank you.
So so approved. We'll see you in three minutes.
Call Barry Cosgrove.
Call Barry Cosgrove. Yeah. Yeah. Right.
For shielding, warning, whatever ever has to be done. Because as I say, this easement is subject to the rights of other people, not just the folks who are before you tonight. So I would just suggest that you have have that information inserted within the plans. So that you've got something to refer to. And others who may want to look at the plan will have that information as well.
Perfect. Thank you, John.
It's just comments that are coming off the top of my head, having received this set of darkness. I know it's been out there for a while, but with everything else that's been going on with the project and knowing where it was. I just did not have a chance to really look at all of. The plan itself, now that they've gone back to the 50 foot setback. That complies with the regulation. Their drainage was never an issue, in my view. Because of the soil conditions that are there, it's entirely different than Farring Hill, so you can't even compare the two. It's very sandy there. I think the applicant is right in terms of the direction of groundwater. That it is generally speaking away from the water wells that are there, even though each well has its own zone of contribution. That draws water into the well from every direction. It's not just one direction. But the general groundwater flow is sort of away from the site. So I don't think that's an issue. So it's these minor details that I'm picking up that were questioned on the first plan, and there's still a couple of things that are outstanding here. So. That's what I picked up tonight.
Thank you, John.
Okay. Sure. To that, thanks. So in terms of dealing with construction period traffic issues, we tried to adjust that in our response letter, actually with Sarah's response letter to Mr. Valley's comments. And noted that there would not be a complete blockage of access. And talked to Long Roads Construction folks to get information to respond thoughtfully there. That there would be no permanent blockage, no complete blockage at any time. That limited to one lane closure during business hours. Closure of all open excavations each day. Construction signage. And also, we were committing, if you wanted to add this as a condition, fine, that we plan to provide advance notice to other users regarding the schedule, the nature of the work. Exercising reasonable efforts to minimize disruption. And then in terms of the precise location of the poles, I think Sarah can speak to that.
Sure. So the location of the poles are noted on the plan, sort of, I know that's not detailed in terms of the exact dimension of the roadway. But the intent of the location is shown within the easement, again, not blocking any of the access. And that can be further refined again as the electrical drawings get progressed. As well as some additional detail in the exact cross section of the underground electric line.
Okay, thank you.
And then in terms of the other detail that Mr. Valley was seeking. Well, one caring for the condition for Blue Waves Construction, the access, and I think that was correct, I was just looking at that permit earlier today. Just for historical purposes. So there could be a condition to do that, so that as after utilities are put in, the road is reconstructed, it's reconstructed to those same standards. And then in terms of other planned details of the precise location of the underground line. We can add that, we propose that that be a condition, so that that's submitted almost in the nature of a condition to provide a as-built plan after the project is built, but in this case, it would be subsequent technical correction to add that additional detail.
Okay. Okay. Thank you again. At this point, I'm going to open it up to public comment. As indicated in the past, please try and bring, if you if you want to address the board, please bring new and relevant information and brain emotions taking over and just rehashing information that we've already heard. That would be much appreciated. So at that point. What do you? I'm going to defer Barry for just one second. I'm going to let this lady in the back come first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Meg Sheehan. I am with the Community Land and Water Coalition. We have members who live, work, and recreate in Wareham. And I've been an attorney in Massachusetts for longer than I'd like to admit. Forty years doing zoning and environmental law. I'd like to address the issue of whether this is a special permit or a site plan review. And submit to the board that it is only a site plan review, it is not a special permit. I know of the board's longstanding practice to kind of melt the two together with solar. But the solar bylaw is actually quite clear. Five ninety five nine two point two says the special permit granting authority for solar is the ZBA. The site plan review authority is the planning board. And here you are looking at a site plan review, a site plan review application, which is a set of conditions that will be applied with a building permit. The planning board has no authority under the bylaw to issue a special permit. That belongs to the ZBA. And in the past, and this relates to other decisions that you've made. You have not followed Chapter forty eight, Section three, I mean, Section nine, which is the site plan, the special permit authority under our Zoning Enabling Act in Massachusetts, Chapter forty eight. Special permits are a creature and created by the zoning law of the state. Site plan review is a creature of your bylaw. It is not zoning. You have the authority as a planning board under a separate enabling act to do site plan review. And when my co-counsel referred to Chapter forty eight, Section three, Paragraph nine, the so-called Dover Amendment Protections for Solar, those do not apply to this site plan review. So you are not constrained by that reasonably regulate provision, and even if you were, it was overstated. And those protections are not blanket, as the chair noted previously. You can reasonably regulate solar for the public health, safety, and welfare. So this is a really important issue, obviously, and we would urge you to look at the bylaw, look at your own table of uses. The table of uses on page thirteen says site plan review is required for solar, and then you go and you get your building permit. It's only if you have a variance requirement, as was the situation here. When you went to the ZBA and you got your special permit application submitted and got ruled on by the ZBA. So this is not a special permit proceeding. And the same thing applies to the previous two matters that we were before you. I will not go into that. But it's very clear. And in the past, you have not applied Article fourteen in issuing your site plan review approvals. You can look at your decisions, your past decisions. You've applied Article fifteen, which are the very detailed conditions that you've been deliberating about tonight. That is site plan review only. It is not under the zoning Enabling Act of Chapter forty eight. And in fact, your own bylaw addresses this.
Okay, if you could.
I'll wrap. I just want to point you to fifteen twenty, Section fifteen twenty of your bylaw that states that when you're acting as the special permit granting authority, which you can do in certain circumstances, such as with cluster developments, I believe it is. You have to conform to Section fifteen ten, which is your site plan, and Section fourteen fifty, which is your zoning. I mean, your special permit article. And you also have to comply with forty eight, Section nine, which again is a whole separate set of procedures for certified butter notice and whatnot. So this is not a special permit proceeding. It's a site plan review. And we thank you for your time and attention to these matters.
Thank you. Mr. Cosgrove.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah, we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If I could kindly defer my comments and then come back and let Mr. Scott Horsley address the body first. I think it would be more efficient use of time with your permission, Mr. Chairman. As long as you instruct the guy to let me come back later, I'd be grateful.
Yeah, that that is fine. Just keeping in in the spirit of what we've requested, which is new relevant information. Mr. Mr. Whitten? Mr. Horsley?
Horsley.
Horsley?
Yes, Mr. Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. If I may share my screen, I do have a few slides to summarize my comments. I think I think I need to be enabled to do that, sir.
Yep, that's happening now.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Chairman, are you able to see my slide, my introductory slide with my name on it, sir?
Yes, we can see it. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. So briefly, I don't believe I addressed the board before, so as others have done, I would like to first start with my credentials very briefly. I have over thirty five years' experience in the field. I've worked for EPA nationally. Mass DEP, many other states municipalities. I currently serve and have served in the past on many Mass DEP advisory boards, including Stormwater Management, Groundwater Discharge Permits, and Climate Change. I am one of the co-authors, lead consultant on the Massachusetts Smart Growth and Smart Energy Toolkit to the Commonwealth, and then I currently serve as adjunct faculty at Harvard and Tufts. Teach graduate courses in Water Resources Management and Low Impact Development. And I believe, I also want to accent, I do teach in the Sustainability Program, which one of the VHB representatives indicated she was a graduate of. And obviously, this is the site. It is, as I think we all know, but worth revisiting, the northern half of the site roughly is has been clear cut as a sand and gravel pit. The bottom half is currently forested. According to Mass GIS mapping, the southern half of the site, a little more than half of the site, is classified as prime forest land. My assessment of the project is related to hydrologic impacts, and I do want to point out there are, I believe, four resource areas that need to be evaluated as part of the project. In fact, the town is interested in those kind of impacts. First of all, as you all know, the site is immediately adjacent to a number of freshwater wetlands. And that may be a perennial stream, by the way, which would put it within jurisdiction, even though they've already applied for that without their perennial stream application. Secondly, of course, is the stream, which is shown here on the Mass GIS map. Directly downstream is salt marsh and estuary resource areas. In terms of the types of impacts which are possible related to the project and would be required to be analyzed as part of submittals by the applicant would be in terms of the freshwater wetlands, any water level changes, as well as thermal impacts in the stream. Flow nutrients, thermal impacts in the salt marsh, salinity, nutrient impacts, and finally, in the downstream estuary Agawam River cumulative nutrient impacts. I don't believe any of these have been evaluated as part of the applicant's submittals to date. This is a portion of the applicant's site plan. As you know, there are two infiltration systems, and this is also a copy of part of my letter. There are, as part of the original application, there were two test pits described. There's some correspondence that indicate there are six test pits, although we have not seen any details of those. As far as I know, the the estimated season high groundwater is based upon measured water levels at one point in time. The Mastie guidance on this suggests that additional measures should be used, including the USGS method. Also, the minimum number of test pits per infiltration basin is three, as is indicated here. Including one boring to at least twenty feet, so I do not believe that the applicant has met these minimum requirements, which again are important relative to the proximity to wetlands and resource areas. As included in my letter, the measured water level on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty one is approximately two feet lower than the actual measured high water table in the USGS index well, which suggests that additional work is required to evaluate the impacts of those infiltration basins. The concern here is something called storm, excuse me, groundwater mounding relative to stormwater infiltration. The site, as I think, I believe you know, plans to direct the runoff from the site to two infiltration basins. Once that's done, the groundwater will respond with mounding analysis, excuse me, groundwater mounding increases in water levels. As the Mastie P guidance recommends and requires, a groundwater mounding analysis should be conducted to determine that that information has not been provided to the town. The, my concern with the site hydrologically is the change in land cover. On the left, we see a pine oak forest typical to this region. On the right, we see a ground mounted solar project. It's pretty clear there are going to be changes in not only land cover, but evapotranspiration rates. And related to ground, evapotranspiration rates are the rate of groundwater recharge, which is one of the Massachusetts DEP's stormwater standards. Here is a quick graphic explaining the difference left to right. On the left, we have existing conditions. We have a number of trees. We have a lot of evapotranspiration going on and a little bit, a reasonable amount of groundwater recharge. On the right-hand side, post-development, we have a significant decreased amount of evapotranspiration and a lot more recharge. This is going to cause water tables to rise, which is why we need to see the analysis of groundwater recharge. Not to get into great detail, but just explain a little bit more what happens with after storm events is some water infiltrates into the surface. And in a vegetative situation, that water is assimilated, but in the root zone. And the and the majority of that water is evaporotranspired back to the atmosphere. Under post-development site conditions, and this is a graphic from the Minnesota Stormwater Manual on on solar installations. A lot of this water is directed according to the drip line to these areas between the panels. A lot of recharge occurs. This is a significantly different hydrologic condition, which needs to be evaluated as part of a site plan review requirement on the town of Wareham. And here is a section of your bylaw which does require site drainage and stormwater to be evaluated per Massachusetts DEP standards. And one of those standards is to make sure that post-development recharge, the amount of water going to the subsurface approximates pre-development standards. Again, that has not been provided. And I should most most specifically suggest that the applicant in their so-called hydrologic report has suggested that they do not need to do a hydrologic assessment because another one was done somewhere in the town at the Farring Hill site. And frankly, this is the first time I've ever seen this attempted to avoid doing your own hydrologic assessment and simply said, there was another one in town done. Let's rely on that, which I've never heard of before, interesting theory. But in this case, that site is in a very different setting. As you can see on the right, the Farring Hill site, which was evaluated by my former firm, Horsley Whitten Group, is in glacial till, which is an extremely different superficial geologic setting than the current site, which is shown here in the left, which is a glacial stratified deposit, sand and gravel. So that site is not applicable. They're suggesting that they can defer their analysis of the site because another project in the town did an evaluation in a different hydrogeologic environment, and I would suggest that that's not not an appropriate condition on which you should decide this project, and you should require an analysis of the site, because I think you find very different results. I also mentioned, based upon your prior discussion earlier tonight on decommissioning impacts, a lot of good questions by the board. A few answers by the applicant, but but obviously, there are more answers needed to be provided by the applicant. This is one of the books that I recommend in my classes, including at Harvard, maybe where the VHB student did your work. This is a very good book about thinking forward to when you build a project, you need to think about the decommissioning. And there's a lot of impacts here that need to be evaluated. I think your questions were right on. And I hope that you get the answers to your questions because they're very good questions. And, Mr. Chair, I'll wrap up on this slide. This was at the end of my my comment letter. These are my six recommendations, which I'll just walk through very quickly. I think that this, again, the site is adjacent to an up gradient from a number of water resources sites. Clearly, in compliance with the Massachusetts DEP's stormwater standards, additional test pits are required. They should adjust those water table measurements according to the USGS method. This is a statewide standard. I'm sure the VHB is very familiar with this. I'm sure they've done it many, many times, and they could easily do it here. There would only be one reason why they wouldn't do it here. So we should do, we should find out what the results of that are. Thirdly, a groundwater mounding analysis is required. The plan is to direct the stormwater to two locations as they've shown on the on the site plan. A groundwater mounding analysis should look at the effects on the groundwater levels. Fourth, the site should be evaluated pre and post-development basis on the hydrologic impacts on the downstream water resources, and that way to do that is to look at the recharge rates pre and post-development. Fourth, look at the hydrologic and ecological impacts based upon that analysis. And number four, and then finally, and number five, a water quality impact assessment and proposed monitoring program. Those are my recommendations, Mr. Chair. I believe they're in compliance with your your bylaw. And based upon your prior discussion, I would think all of these would be well within your area of interest. Thank you, and I will stop sharing. Be happy to answer any questions. I know the applicant has asked for time to respond to our presentation, so I would certainly like to ask for an opportunity to respond to their questions, if I may, Mr. Chair, if we want to be fair about things. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chair, could you request a copy of the presentation?
Cool. Yeah, could we please have a copy of of your comments and presentation forwarded to the planning office?
Yes, I believe you've already received my comment letter. But I certainly can provide the slides if that's you're referring to, but the the comment letter has already been provided.
All right, thank you. Okay. As promised, Mr. Cosgrove, I told him that he would have time once Mr. Horsley was done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
First of all, through you, Mr. Chairman, just a question, you were kind enough to point out in last meeting that our minute, the minutes didn't even reflect our our comments, and I'm hopeful that'll be, has been fixed. Second.
Just just to be fair. Our our minutes are a a quick representation of what takes place at these meetings, and they're not meant to be a verbatim depiction of what went on. So as as long as we keep our expectations realistic, then we'll be, we'll be good.
Absolutely understand your point. At least we, at the very least, need to be recognized as as having been interested in this project. Second, you know, many comments made about the Cosgrove letter, I in respect to the thirty people who contributed to it, it's an amalgamation of concerns of a lot of folks. With only four minutes, it's extremely difficult. Let me give it a shot. All the points about the cadmium telluride, they missed the point. The point is that those things are going to be sitting in a disposal site for decades. And the study that was presented, which they say is not completed or accurate, they've made no attention to the fact that these things are going to be around forever. On the issue of PFAS free and their letter being so clear, two points, one, there are different categories of PFAS, and their letter only addressed one. And secondly, if they're so sure they're so sure on the PSAF and BFAS and they're so sure on the cadmium telluride, then certainly the monitoring wells, P and post-monitoring wells shouldn't be a threat to them whatsoever. Or the indemnities. On the issue of the decommissioning and the surety bonds, you know, we gave you an extensive number of ideas there. And your questions show your extraordinary diligence in this. Just point out a few obvious points. The idea that you would agree, that they would ask you to agree to a surety bond after the fact is really, really not in the town's best interest. That's truly betting the town, to quote one of your members. What happens if the surety bond industry changes and they can't get it? And then what happens if they don't have the cash either? It's been mentioned many times. There's no guarantees. How do we get this right? Here's how you get it right. Cash. Cash security. A well-run business would reserve for these costs anyway. Why don't they here? No mention, by the way, of decommissioning for the transformer costs as well. We've urged Security Bond Council, I've taken a look at several of the bonds the town has. Many of them don't even show the address. Some of them aren't signed by the principal. Many aren't signed by the obligee. It needs a lot of help. Similarly, on the decommission expert input, thereto, I think you're right on in terms of how to handle it. The point was made about about environmental laws, existing laws protects this and protects that. There are plenty of laws that say this and say that. What I'm, what we're trying to advance to you is that you need to be indemnified for the costs that occur in a dispute like that. You guys have done nothing wrong. You don't own the land. You don't own or operate the solar facility. You should not have to be a dog on that porch wasting towns' resources defending lawsuits when two other people are fighting. The indemnity is to protect the town from that type of circumstance as well. Not a mention. Not a mention of the interconnection agreement. Can you imagine that? Not a mention. Where is it? When is it? On the right-of-way question, if they've got an opinion, let's let's see it. And let's let's see how they address the twenty five thousand vote question. The cumulative impacts, I think the expert has addressed it. I want to respect your time limit. There was a question asked. There's nothing to prevent the closing of the hearing? Yes, there is. It's betting the town. This thing is not ready to be closed. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions you may have. And I would point out, Mr. Horsley's report, along with our report, was delivered per your request a week, over a week prior to the hearing. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. Before I allow rebuttals to the comments, is there anybody else that would? While that was online, I'm going to take someone in the audience.
Hi, Nancy McHale, Farring Hill Road. Just one quick comment. I've been coming to these hearings since forever, it seems. And the applicant has been Wareham PV One LLC. And now this is Long Road Energy. Is there a connection here? I don't see anything in the paperwork transferring from one LLC to another. I'm just very confused. As to who you're negotiating with.
Well, as far as a special permit site plan review. We're negotiating with the landowner. These people just happen to want this project on his land.
Okay.
So just like twenty seven charge upon and to haunt it, one fifty to haunt it. That's gone through three different owners, but we're still having the same discussions about the project. So I think our concerns about the quality of the project, the protections for the environment and for the residents, the protections for the residents as far as the economic, potential economic costs go. i- i- it doesn't matter who owns the project.
Okay, so that whatever was originally agreed to with Wareham PV One LLC.
It all goes with the land.
It all goes and the whoever is now in charge of the project.
Is bound by those agreements or, or what agreements will be made, correct?
Just checking. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. Annie, I saw your hand up.
Thank you all for your insightful comments and your sincere care.
Identify yourself.
Hey, hey, it's too promising. Um. I want to read what's in the S E C annual report from First Solar. I find that S E C reports are very insightful. It seems the one place where there is more honesty than in others. A lot of First Solar um statements are their own reviews. It's very hard to find a third party. Our solar modules contain cadmium telluride and other semiconductor materials, other semiconductor. Elemental cadmium and certain and certain of its compounds are regulated as hazardous materials due to the adverse effect health effects that may arise from human exposure, they said, and certain con uh, compounds are hazardous. Based on existing research, the risks of exposure to C D T E cadmium, cadmium telluride are not believed to be as serious as those relating to exposure to elemental cadmium due to cadmium tellurides, limited bioavailability. It talks about the manufacturing conditions. In addition, the risk of exposure is further minimized by the encapsulated nature of these materials in our products, the physical properties of cadmium compounds used in our products, and the recycling or responsible disposal of our modules. This is built into their brand from the get-go. Right now, the only panels that are prepaid and have a separate fund so that will always be there are ones that were bought before two thousand thirteen. And I will submit their different proposals now because they go from cadmium telluride, cadmium is recycled by a third party. That's, that's a new thing. They say they're global facilities for recycling. There are three that I've read of in mu- many sources. Malaysia, Frankfurt, Germany, and Ohio. Sounds like there's a two-hundred-mile limit of transport. Right now, they say the party that owns them has to um, just decommission them, disassemble them, package them, and ship them. I guess they provide this packaging. This is always changing and part of that is because there are additional um, articles that I found where there are investor lawsuits, one current, one uh from two thousand fifteen that was settled for two hundred, three hundred and fifty million dollars. Because their solar um doesn't represent their pa- their panels, their new modules without misrepresenting them. So this is a big issue and they have said that um, their they were, their um stocks were tanking and so they, they misrepresented this new um six module. And when it was found out that that was not accurate, um, the, the stocks became very um on the downside. Um.
If, if you've got more, Annie.
I do. I have a lot more.
No, you don't have that much time.
I know, I know. Okay, um.
I'll give you a, a, another minute.
The point is recycling or responsible disposal. What I know about selling ten-year-old solar modules is that they go to third-world countries and that's where they end up in landfills for sure. Right now, they're building a fi- a six-hundred-megawatt uh project in India. What are they recycling? That cadmium is going to go somewhere. And the Stuttgart study is very relevant because if it goes in the landfills, that's what they were studying. And the acidity is because landfills have different degrees of pH depending upon the dis- decomposition and the age of the landfill. All right?
Thank you, Annie.
I'll submit this stuff.
Okay, I have one more thing. This is important. It's a very important.
Very quickly, please.
I have a new um brand niece or nephew, not sure yet. I went to the Whaling Museum and I saw this and this was the only thing I thought I could buy, not the fuzzy things, not the cute little octopus. It says free of B P A, lead, malamine, nitrosamines, PVC, phthalates, and biologically toxic chemicals. And that's what happens somewhere with that cadmium. It's not going into outer space.
Are, are we going to get that whatever she was referencing?
Yeah, afterwards, Anna, if we can get the items, get copies of the items you referenced today. Is there someone online too? I want to be fair. I don't want to flip-flop back and forth between the room and online. Okay, Darren. Okay, whoever is uh online.
Hi, um, I'm Jill Rizgen, I'm two eighteen Charge Pond Road. Um, and I'd like to thank the board for um giving this project so much time and consideration. Um, obviously, there continues to be a lot of legitimate concerns regarding the safety of the aquifer, um, our residential well water, wetlands, um, and the potential for chemical leakage from, yeah, another solar farm on Charge Pond Road. Um, any potential risk to nearby water supplies or wetlands should just simply disqualify any solar project from the start. Uh, but do we want to find out down the road there are problems? Or maybe we should just be preventing the possibility of problems in the first place? People are already becoming very leery and wary of solar arrays like this. However, the solar industry as a whole and its proponents want to try to minimize the potential risks, there are still risks. And I fully believe at this point in time, we haven't begun to realize the full extent of future negative effects these solar arrays will have on our resources. Excuse me, in the environment. There are too many not likelies. And there's too many unknowns. Our neighborhood on Charge Pond Road is not directly benefiting from these solar projects. Yet we are the ones who are being exposed to the risks as well as those who do use the aquifer. This is clearly not an ideal area for a solar array. There are too many issues and real concerns. And sadly, it looks like Charge Pond Road and other nearby areas are well on the way to being surrounded by solar arrays. Most residents here on Charge Pond Road don't want this. We do not want to be surrounded. We are caring about our environment. We're caring about our health. And these solar companies have a very different bottom line. And I thank you for my time.
Thank you.
My name is Catherine Harrelson and I work for an organization called Community Land and Water Coalition at one fifty-eight Center Hill Road in Plymouth, Massachusetts. Uh, I also grew up in Wareham as a third-generation summer resident of Wareham and um, this town is uh very, very important to me. Um, I would like to make two points uh based on discussions in the for, in the hearing that's been taking place. Um, number one, I would like to comment on Mr. Schultz's uh calculations about the decommissioning costs in relation to the total megawatts of the project. Uh, I kind of did my own calculations after the planning board hearing on November twenty-eighth uh, in which the study out of Charleston, Massachusetts was referenced. Um, during the planning board meeting, uh, it was brought up that uh recent studies have estimated approximately two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for de-commissioning per megawatt. But then an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the decommissioning of a battery system. Uh, I believe this site has one battery system on site. And therefore, if you add in the battery system, the decommissioning cost should be closer on the order of one point one million dollars uh, for a project of this size with three point five mi- uh, megawatts and one battery system. Uh, if in reference to the information that was brought up on the planning board meeting on November twenty-eighth. Um, my second point um is uh, uh, just to support and echo what Scott Horstley said. And I would like to read some information from the applicant's report about the conditions of the southern portion of the site. According to the applicant, the southern portion of the site consists of pine canopy with a dense shrub understory. This is just, is a description of the southeastern Massachusetts Pine Barrens, which is a unique ecoregion found only in southeastern Massachusetts. The pine barrens are also found in Long Island, New Jersey. The Massachusetts forests support over two hundred state and federally listed species and cutting down another twenty-one acres of this rare wilderness threatens the biodiversity ecoregion. According to the consultant's report, the site soils consist of a glacial outwash deposits, which consists of loamy sands, fine sands, and seasonally high water tables of forty-four to fifty inches below grade. And the site groundwater is recharged by precipitation, rainwater, and snowmelt. This is a description of the Plymouth Carver sole source aquifer. It's clear from the analysis that the client has done on this site, the applicant has done on this site, that the site is canopied by the southeastern Massachusetts Pine Barrens and sits atop the Plymouth, the Plymouth Carver sole source aquifer. Numerous studies are coming out that shows how forests are a mitigation source for climate change. Wareham has lost over three hundred acres of forests to solar developments in the last ten years. This site proposes to cut down another twenty-one acres of forests for solar development. Furthermore, coupled with the fact that we do not know where these panels are going, coupled with the fact that potentially in twenty years, these panels were, will turn into solid waste. We're talking about cutting down another twenty-one acres of forest and turning it into a pile of solid waste. This is not a climate solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, is there anyone else in the audience? Hmm, we're online. Nope, okay. Uh, if, any comments before I allow them to respond? Okay. I promised you you'd have some time to respond. Floor is yours.
Sure, I'll, I'll address some of the um less technical things. Um, uh, just starting from the last one first because it's top of mind. Um, the site is twenty-one acres, but um, one of the reasons, um, I think Sarah explained this last time that this site was chosen was because it was already largely cleared. So uh, the additional clearing for this project is um, only about uh eight and a half acres. I couldn't address machines comments about site plan review special permit. I, I continue to believe that the practical implications are nil um at this moment, so um unless you have questions that I can help you with, I think I would let it be. Um. Um, M- Mr. Cargrove still keeps talking about the First Solar letter not being clear that there's no PFAS, but it's very clear and expansive. It says our um chemical composition of our products and manufacturing process are annually screened and contain no uh peripheral alkaline substances PFAS, so not particular kinds of PFAS. Um. Quite clear. Um. Uh. If the bond industry changes, you know, most solar projects have surety bonds and there's a really good reason for that, which is that there's uh an insurance industry that allows these risks to be pooled. Um, and basically, um, both for the developer and a municipality um, seeking a higher decommissioning amount, it's bigger bang for the buck. Um, there's a professional credit-worthy company um standing up just like a health insurer, property insurer uh to be paid a premium. Um. Uh, i- if for some reason there were some uh catastrophic failure in the surety bond industry, um, then your bylaw would require there to still be financial assurance. So there would have to be um substitution of another bond from a different company um, or another form of financial assurance. Um, the project would not be in compliance with the bylaw um without financial assurance in place. Um, so again, you don't need a crystal ball. You're not making a twenty-year bet on one particular thing. Your bylaw requires financial assurance at all times. Um. Uh, the interconnection agreement was mentioned by Mr. Cosgrove. Correct, this project does not contain an interconnection agreement yet. Um, your bylaw does not require it. Your bylaw only requires the site plan um, review application for a solar project show that the utility is aware that the applicant intends to interconnect. And our site plan application dating back to when it was filed um many, many months ago um included documentation of just that. Um, there's no dispute that the utility is very aware that um this project intends to interconnect. Um, beyond that, um it seemed like the, some of the concerns were that somehow the project would be built and abandoned because of the lack of an interconnection agreement being forthcoming. That won't happen. Their projects do not get, they do not begin construction without an interconnection agreement. Um, and uh so that's just not a realistic scenario. Um. The right of way, he asks if we have an opinion, where is it? We submitted a written legal opinion in July on this topic. Um, where I was talking about um engaging um Richard Goldar, it was basically going and um reaching into our pocket for a second opinion. Um, trying to find someone who is even more expert, who has been hired in the past by this very town uh for uh, these sorts of questions. Um, Mr. Goldar already spoke directly with uh the town administrator, Mr. Buckland and its council um this past week. Um, so we've essentially rendered that opinion, that second opinion orally. Um, nothing under wraps. Um. Wareham PV One LLC is a wholly owned subsidiary of Long Road Energy. Um, uh, and that's been the case since the site plan review application was filed. Um, uh, there are solar developers uh in the market whose model, business model is to um uh focus on their core business of developing a project to a pre-construction phase and selling it. That's not Long Roads' model. Long Roads' model is long-term asset ownership. Um. Not promising that ownership can't change ever, but just, just so you know, um. Uh. The questions about First Solar, um, I used to craft environmental disclosure for public companies earlier in my career and I know that they, they tend to be awfully conservative, um disclosing risks so that investors are not misled. Um, so that if there's any potential risk, it's disclosed. Um, I don't know the details of this, but frankly, it sounds somewhat consistent with what we've already heard from First Solar and the independent studies. Um. That um because of the nature of the panels, the end result is um no significant risk. Um, in terms of recycling, uh, I, I think you heard from Joanne Blank um, some good thought into not making uh uh overly um liberal assumptions about where recyclers will be um and what the recycling market will be um many years out. Um, essentially, we've added extra costs for recycling as opposed to ordinary disposal. Um, so we think that overall it makes our plan uh more conservative. Um, we'd still be open to um uh further post approval. Um. Uh, finessing of a final amount um that's based on expert input um for the town. Uh, to ensure that we're, we're um not seeking perfect um but seeking at, at, at least very good. Um. Okay, I think I'll turn it over to Sarah at this point to respond to Mr. Horstley's comments.
Thank you. There were just a couple I wanted to review. Um, and again, if it's too technical or you want more detail.
too technical or you want more detail, please feel free to interrupt me. Um, one of Mr. Horstley's comments regarding resource areas. So again, we are adhering to the Massachusetts standards. Those standards are put in place to protect the resource areas in accordance with the Wetlands Protection Act uh, and water quality regulations as listed on uh, Mass D E P. The location of these infiltration basins are at least one hundred and fifty, up to two hundred fifty feet away from the nearest wetland edge. As you're aware, we have a negative determination from the Conservation Commission. We're not impacting any of the resource areas, including wetlands, one hundred foot buffer zones to those wetlands, and the two hundred foot riverfront area to the stream that was mentioned as well. So I just wanted to reiterate that those locations and the effects on those have absolutely been taken into account with our stormwater management design. Secondly, in regards to the groundwater monitoring, again, we argue that the two point one feet that Mr. uh, Horstley refers to in terms of a groundwater adjustment isn't applicable in this case. Um, again, the engineer that performed the test pits, if there is redox visible over five percent, which is just an indication of where the groundwater elevation is. Um, according to Massachusetts Standards, that you can use that elevation as estimated seasonal high groundwater. Uh, the test pits were also performed in April, in the spring, which is when groundwater is the highest. So again, it was a little bit conservative. We felt very comfortable using that as, again, an estimated seasonal high groundwater. Even with the adjustment that Mr. Horstley noted, one of the infiltration basins would still be well, not well over, but four point five feet separated to the adjusted groundwater, which again, a mounting analysis would not be applicable there. If a groundwater mounting analysis was performed for basin number one, and in an effort of not sending in material at the last minute, did a desktop calculation, um, it reflected with a couple assumptions, again, just based on the information we have from those uh, preliminary test pits. Groundwater mounding would only occur um, six inches above the current groundwater elevation. So again, we have, even with the adjustment, about two point eight feet without the adjustment, four point five feet from groundwater, we still have over two feet separation when the groundwater is mounding at its absolute highest. Uh, we have provided recharge calculations noting that both of these uh, drawdown within seventy two hours as well, as noted in the Massachusetts Standards. Had one more. Oh, the amount of test pits. Again, these are preliminary test pits that were performed at the beginning of the design. Uh, it's very common, as I'm sure you've seen on other plans, that test pits don't necessarily end up in the exact location of where these infiltration systems are built. Again, just through different iterations of these uh, of the designs of the basins. We absolutely are planning to adhere to having a minimum of three um, test pits done for each infiltration basin. The standards note one per every five thousand. Um, square feet of footprint of the basin, each one of these are less than twenty two hundred, but again, Massachusetts Standards dictates a minimum of three for per basin, so we um, intend to complete that as well prior to construction. Again, it's our opinion that the concerns about the hydrology of the site have been sort of finalized by Mehdi in his hydrology assessment, both in his memo and uh, his presentations to the board. I would be happy to turn it over to him if he has any specific um, items he wants to mention, or if the board has specific questions. But I do just want to point out one uh, quote from his memo saying, "Scientific studies have determined that solar farms do not have adverse hydrologic impacts. If a well maintained grass cover is maintained, a buffer section is installed or a detention basin is added." Um, and this project involves all three of those measures as well. Um, again, if Mehdi wants to respond to any of the more technical elements of the hydrology, he's, he should still be online. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, we have a hand up. He had his hand up first, sorry. You wanna allow Mr. Horst, Mr. Horstley? Can yours?
Yes, thank Ken, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, just a, a brief response to those uh, points, and thank you for the opportunity to do that. I think it's fair. Um, I believe we just heard that the infiltration basins are two hundred and fifty feet from wetland resource areas. I would suggest that you check the plans on that. I don't believe that's true. Uh, we can, we can scale it off in the plans and make a joint determination, but I don't think that's accurate. Uh, secondly, uh, the applicant in their hydrologic report is depending on the Farring Hill hydrogeologic study, which is in their report, and as I, as I tried to explain tonight, uh, that site is uh, in a very different location hydrogeologically. And as I inferred, that's at, at least in my experience, very abnormal for an applicant to say, "We're not going to do the study here because somebody else did it someplace else in town." So clearly, you required, the town required a hydrogeologic assessment of these groundwater impacts uh, that I outlined earlier this evening on the Farring Hill site. I don't know why you wouldn't require it here. I, the site is uh, immediately adjacent, as I pointed out, to wetlands, streams, and downstream, salt marsh, and estuary. Uh, it is in sensitive resource areas. Uh, I believe that the study is warranted, and the applicant suggested reliance upon another project at another location in a different geologic environment, I think is, is simply not applicable. So I, I really think that additional information is required. We just heard something about a groundwater mounding analysis. Uh, haven't seen it. I don't believe it's in the file. Uh, that would be a small part of the hydrogeologic assessment, which was done at Farring Hill, and fair is fair. That's what was done over at Farring Hill, no pun intended. Uh, why not here? Uh, this site, uh, as I said, is immediately adjacent to wetland resource areas, streams, et cetera. So uh, I believe uh, some additional analysis is required, Mr. Chair. I, I certainly understand the applicant's uh, confidence that all is well, but the purpose of these hearings is to collect information and review it in a, in a fair and equitable manner. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Okay.
If I could just respond to.
If we can keep it clear, I just, I want to avoid a back and forth.
Very quick, absolutely. I just wanted to clarify that if my, my statement earlier was misinterpreted, um, the one hundred and fifty to two hundred fifty foot range I was referring to is the edge of the basin to the edge of the wetland. If we're talking strictly resource areas, which include the riverfront area and uh, the buffer zones, the basins are a range of about thirty to sixty feet outside of those. So I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. I'm gonna allow one more. Ma'am, and then I think that'll be enough to me.
I would like to respond to the point. Oh, my name is Meg Sheehan from Community Land of Water Coalition. I'd like to respond to the point that the site was previously cleared. In fact, um, there was an earth removal uh, operation here. We, it was unpermitted, and this area is surrounded by unpermitted earth removal operations, and we have.
Question's already been asked and answered.
I, I understand that, but the representation that it's previously cleared as if it had no connection to the solar, I believe is not an entirely accurate portrayal of what's going on in Wareham, and we have seen this time and time again with many of these solar sites, and we have sent a demand letter to the Board of Selectmen for enforcement of the earth removal bylaw at six, with six landowners in this town, and some of them are directly related to site preparation for large ground mounted solar projects. So this relates directly to the hydrology and the groundwater impacts in the immediate area because there are a number of sites right around here where the same site preparation or previously cleared land was used for solar, and you just referred to uh, the Shore Cran site, which I believe is also an unpermitted earth removal operation nearby. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've said nothing all night.
I was gonna say, I was waiting for you to talk.
Uh, relative to the last comment only, um, from attorney Robert Galvin, um, from Ten Enterprise Street in Duxbury, Massachusetts. I'm a municipal attorney and land use attorney. I've been practicing for thirty years. Town Council in Marshfield, Norwell, Rockland, Stonem, and I represent the Plymouth Airport Commission, Plymouth Economic Growth and Development Corporation, the Marshfield Airport Commission, Southfield Redevelopment Authority in Weymouth. Relative to this property, I'm, Mr. Fletcher is a personal attorney. Um, from two thousand nineteen to two thousand fourteen is a part of a then planned Cranberry project that was exempt earth removal that occurred. In two thousand eighteen, you've seen the settlement agreement with the town. As a result of the abandonment of the Cranberry project, uh, Mr. Fletcher entered into an agreement with the town to settle. The town would have ordinarily received some compensation associated with earth removal. We settled, uh, and that agreement is on file. There has been no uh, earth removal at this site since two thousand eighteen. There are some, um, there is some excess material that was left over from a budding project that's on site, but there are virtually no cuts or fills planned with respect to this proposed project, and we think this is a non-issue.
Thank you. Okay. Any comments?
I have a couple of questions. Actually, mostly to Ken. It was referenced to a meeting that you had with um, Derek and uh, council, with uh, town council about the easement question. Uh, have you all settled that? Are you on the same page?
That was just an initial meeting with the uh, between the councils to uh, find out where we were in the process.
So there isn't any settlement of that issue at this point?
No, there isn't.
Okay, and um, the at, um, I was looking through uh, the file and uh, saw an email from you, uh, I think it was dated in June, suggesting that uh, the board hire a hydrogeologist to look at this project. In light of uh, issues raised by Derek and also by the, the Board of Selectmen, given what you have heard and Charlie, what you've heard uh, from uh, from various experts tonight and previously, what is your thought at this point about hiring a hydrogeologist?
Um, my, my feeling is that uh, uh, there has to be some risk, uh, some uh, some uh, identifiable uh, uh, resource or, or uh, uh, entity that is going to be potentially harmed by the by the, the change in groundwater, and it doesn't sound like there's much of a change in the groundwater as a result of the of the, of the information that we have so far. Although the, the graphic shows a significant mounding, it doesn't turn out to be that much in, in terms of what kind of impact it has. So what is it, uh, what is it impacting in that regard? The, the selectmen at this time, we're talking about the uh, or the town administrator was talking about the uh, use of the easement, and uh, the cost associated with uh, uh, granting uh, laying down of uh, of commercial uh, distribution or transmission lines through the easement. And that became a, a conversation that we had with the council at that time. Uh, the, the hydro geo study could be of interest if there was something that was going to be impacted by it. I, I'm not sure what is actually uh, at risk though, in this case.
Okay. Charlie, do you have anything different or further thoughts?
Uh, just a couple of thoughts with regard to a hydrogeologic study. Clearly, the site is different than what Farring Hill Road was. Um, runoff potential is significantly different. Um, Maseba made mention of the perimeter redox. I don't know if folks are familiar with that, but essentially it means there's a rust line, which is an oxidation line that will occur in the soil when the groundwater reaches a certain level, and then it drops off, and there's a certain amount of oxidation that takes place in that as the water level drops. And when you have very sandy soils, which you have in this particular case, the idea of doing test pits and observing whether or not that redox or oxidation condition exists is probably a much better indication of groundwater height, maximum high ground, high groundwater height, than trying to do something the way that was done at Farring Hill. Farring Hill used a process that involves the observations that are done in a well, which is fifteen to twenty miles away from us. And it's the closest one. When I was in my uh, personal um, business, I used that well many times in areas of the town where you could not use um, the oxidation uh, situation because the terrain and the geology of the site didn't allow you to do it. In this particular case, it's different. In any case where you have these sand deposits, and especially in this one where the ground level, whether it was taken out uh, through excavation, or whether it's observed there through the uh, cranberry bogs that are close by, you're gonna find that groundwater level is gonna be pretty much indicative of what's going on around the cranberry bogs themselves. And I would argue that yes, there may be some mounding, but it's gonna be very limited because of two things. First of all, the site being very porous and sandy, and as is required, you're going to expect them to loam and seed that entire site. So it means that you're gonna have a lot of direct runoff recharge into the ground throughout the site. The area that they picked for two retention basins are where um, they have created the road around the perimeter, and they want to keep some of the water away from the road, and these small detention areas take that into consideration. So there's a very mount, a very small portion of the site that goes into these infiltration basins themselves. So to get a significant mounding impact from a limited amount of runoff water, I think um, is not realistic to expect. That's why in my review, I said that I did not think that um, the uh, stormwater calculations were that important to this particular site. It's not to say that it's not important other places, but in this particular case, because the ground is relatively flat, the soil is very porous, you're gonna get that direct recharge into the ground. Um, it has been mentioned about certain wells and so forth, but again, um, I think everybody acknowledges that the direction of groundwater flow is in a south to southeasterly direction. Uh, I read in one of the comments that Charge Pond Road is recognized as a divide, and that's true. Uh, back in the nineteen seventies, there was a um, Weston and Sampson report that was done when a good portion of what used to be Atlantic properties, which is now where the house lots are in Charge Pond Road, when that was all developed, the Wareham Fire District uh, had a study done. And they determined that the Charge Pond Road was essentially the uh, subsurface hydrological divide between subsurface runoff that goes to the west and subsurface runoff that goes to the east. So I, I really don't, I think Ken's point is well taken. If there is a specific thing which can be identified as a significant issue with respect to the groundwater, then perhaps that should be uh, dealt into. But just to do the hydraulic study for hydraulic study purposes, just arbitrarily to do it, I would very, be very surprised if you find substantial differences in the groundwater that's already there.
One, one final question. Um, I think at one point, um, uh, Derek raised a question about amounts owed to the town for earth removal. Has that issue been resolved?
I believe we have, we have documentation that resolved it with uh, Mr. Fletcher.
Okay.
We do, we have that document.
I, I saw the, I think it was a twenty eighteen document. I had thought he raised something more recent than that, but maybe, maybe that's been resolved.
Uh, to best my knowledge, it has been resolved.
Okay, okay.
I've seen the document. I'm, I'm satisfied that that subject has been, has been resolved.
Okay.
Mike? You're very helpful this evening.
Thing is, we're, we're gonna get down to uh, the point of closing this public hearing, you know, when hell that can happen.
Why not?
Yeah, that was good. I mean, my question is what additional materials, if any, are we waiting for? I, I don't know the answer to the question, so that's, that's my question.
Well, the, the more we talk, the more concerns come up. You know, in my mind anyway, you know, like I said, money won't vote on the board.
No, but what, what additional information do you think we're waiting for?
Well, I'm still haven't made that sit, that total decision yet. Still working on it.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Okay. You're good for now. Sam?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Carl, you're all set with comments?
It's been answered. We requested a cop. We requested a copy of Mr. Horsley's PowerPoint. If we close the public hearing, we can get it, but it's not part of the record.
I, I would like to submit the NREL report as part of the record too. If it's not already in.
I, I don't see it in the.
It was, I, I don't think it got distributed beyond the scope of.
And there's the information that any.
Concerning.
The first Solar's annual report is a summary set with Miss Hayes's. Documentation, but it was mostly related to first Solar's annual report. Which hasn't been entered into the record yet.
So I'm getting, I'm getting the. The, the feeling that. Most of the board is not in support of closing the public.
My question was more enumerating what we thought we didn't have and is that material to the decision or not?
Well, I think for me. Here's my big thing. The easement question hasn't been answered. We're, we're listening to Ken. Talk about a discussion between council. But I haven't heard a resolution yet.
But also, we did hear from Attorney Clavens. Excuse me, Claven or Clavon?
Clavens.
Clavens, thank you, I'd like to, that. His position was is that's outside the zoning. Our jurisdiction.
So we could special, we could.
We, he gave us some real language around conditioning. Ownership or not aggregating any rights or. He gave us words that I don't remember. So the question is, I guess, through you to. Mr. Buckland, is the right of way issue a zoning issue or not under our purview?
I think the, the installation of the utility is part of your purview.
Okay, all right. Excuse me. Thank you. Which is. So then we, we would need, if it's part of our purview, then we would need to hold the.
We need clap so it can be introduced into the record. So we're missing. The question of the easement. Needs to be resolved, in my opinion. The, the decommissioning costs are still. Not a hundred percent from where I feel they should be. And to the young lady's. Credit, I. Knew about the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar per battery, but I completely.
I wasn't comparing it to that number. I was comparing it to the two sixty seven. She's right, there's other costs, but I.
Other costs. So I'd like to see that addressed.
So, so we're, we're asking for an updated decommissioning plan. We're going to introduce the NREL study, which would give you some information that has informed us.
So if we, if we could get a copy or a resolution to the easement. An updated decommissioning plan, taking into account our comments and concerns as far as costs.
We need a path forward on the special permit site plan review issue. I think it would be good to think about that a little more and maybe discuss it with council.
To determine if we're.
The, the confusion of the bylaw and, and. Attorney Sheen, this point. I, it's recognized and in fact, when we rewrote the bylaw, we addressed that. But unfortunately, the version of the bylaw that we are operating with is somewhat. Confusing or at least inconsistent.
Subject to interpretation and we get to make the call.
Well, that's.
Closing the hearing doesn't preclude any of that.
Yes, it does. You can't take any more, you can't take any more.
We can't take any documentation and we can't talk about it.
We can talk about it for sixty, ninety days.
Yeah, but we can't take any new information.
I don't need any new information.
Okay, well, that's, that's for you. That's why I said, what new information are we looking for? And then we could. As a group, we have to decide if that information. Applies to your motion or not. The key is, I think, if we act on your motion, we can't take any of that information. I think.
If, if I could comment just briefly. The, you know, one. We've been going on for quite a long time. There will never be. A, an end to new information. We tried to address that as best we could. There, there will never be an end to new information. Any information that was presented in this public hearing, including Mr. Horsley's presentation.
Oh, we could, we could.
Is part of the public record.
Okay, so even, even though we don't have the paper copy. It, it's part of the public record, so we can get that. And Miss Hayes's documentation, same, same thing.
The easement that I think is.
And easement. This is a business dispute. It is not a zoning issue. And my understanding is that Rich Bowen advised the town administrator. This past week. At the meeting, Rich Goldratt attended that. The planning board should not hold up site approval based on this business issue.
Well.
Yes, the town wants.
To me.
What's that?
That's news to me. If that's those conversations and decisions have taken place somewhere in an office. Then it hasn't reached the board.
Isn't, isn't that almost calling that backdoor dealing?
Well, I've no, I, I wouldn't say that.
You know, we, we asked for information on the dispute about the. Illegal earth removal. We got a document, well, just recently, that it was solved nineteen eighteen, well, two thousand eighteen. That, that was fairly new. That it was resolved at two thousand eighteen. That question was asked a year ago. So, you know, like I said, there's not, there's, there's a trust problem here. That's what it is. Every time we come here, we get more information. It makes us more intelligent to make a right decision. I appreciate you as an attorney. I think you're pretty sharp, but that's your job. And like I said, I can't take your word for it. That's why there's two attorneys and a judge.
Right. Well, well, we submitted the, the copy of the settlement. Quite a while ago, and the settlement was with the town. It wasn't between private parties. It was with the town itself.
Well, we don't, we don't trust the town either.
All right. Let's, let's, let's move on from that. I, I do have, I do have one question. I wrote myself a note. So. We come up with a number for the decommissioning, whatever that number is. And you secure a bond to cover those costs. The annual cost of, of. Maintaining that bond, whatever it might be.
Yes.
What happens when you start paying the bill?
You know, like any.
The bond, the bond goes away, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct, but then the project is in violation of the bylaw.
Right, then we'll write back to enforcement, which we've already gone over.
Or the problem is, is if we enforce it and we decommission it, then we have to pay to tear it down.
Right.
We're hamstrung here.
Is there, is there a vehicle?
You call the bond. You get advance notice of a default and you call the bond. The bond can't be terminated in that respect. You call the bond.
But that, could that possibly be a vehicle that the developer would use when our five-year meeting comes up and we say, hey? The, the eight hundred thousand you proposed in the beginning is great, but new numbers show that really should be two million. And at that point, they just stop paying the bill. The bond goes into default and we get the eight hundred grand and we're still in, in the, in a bad position.
Speaking on behalf of the property owner. Our interests are aligned with you, that in the event that they don't continue with this, we want it removed and restored too. So we're not arguing with you, but I think the solution here is you to choose an expert to tell you. We've proposed is sufficient and what the property owner thinks is sufficient. And we'll abide, I understand Attorney Clavens, they'll abide by that.
Right, and in terms of the. Folks mentioned. Assuming you engage an expert to help review the decommissioning amount. That expert can and should consider that NREL report. And, and any other data that's relevant.
Okay.
I want to clarify. What you're looking at is the design of the, of the utility line that goes through there and the, the poles that exist at the end and whether or not it's in the easement. And is designed appropriately. The business decision on the value of that crossing of the easement is something that's just in the purview of the town administrator and the board of selectmen.
Right, and, and we've provided detailed plans showing the utility line.
So there's no dispute from the town that they can. Run this line.
Could, could I? What are you saying is a business dispute, it's not our business. Stay out.
Could I add something that might be relevant too? Not only do we have an easement, but we have a statutory right to place utilities within the easement under chapter one eighty seven, section five. It, it's a settled matter of Massachusetts law that we have the right to put utilities in. In easement that we have the, that we have a right to use. Attorney Bowen is not going to disagree with that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, just, just one thing that we're talking all around here. I had mentioned two or three things that I think should be on the plan. And I think the details of where that line goes and the warnings, the safety measures and so forth. Depth of cover and all of that, which is not a part of your plan right now, should be incorporated. Whether you write that into a special condition. Assuming there's a special permit or whether you request it now, that's your choice. But it should be on the plan. And I, I think the plan should be updated at some point to where you've got something that shows that detail. That has nothing to do with rights to go in there, but it is more or less a public safety issue.
Right, design.
As I say, they're not the only ones who have the rights in it, others do.
Right, there's others that are going across that.
Okay. And we offered to, to provide that technical revision in the same way. A permit condition might require submission of an as-built plan.
Okay, all right, well. Based on the question I'm going to ask. I guess the first question I need to ask is. I would entertain a motion and, and I'm going to let this go to a board vote because we.
We have a motion on the table, by the way.
Oh, we do. You're correct. We have a motion on the table to close the public hearing. Let's make paperwork. For thirty-three dash twenty-one Wayham PVV LLC site plan review zero route twenty-five. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
So we have a motion and a, by Sam Corbett, a second by Carl Schultz. We will put it to a board vote. Sherry, you're gonna abstain. Did you want to abstain from this?
I probably need to not vote because I was not here for the entire. Proceeding, unless I can vote on this.
I would say she should be able to vote on, on closing the.
Only, only if she's taking a substitute. Position on the project because of another member, regular member not being available.
All right, so after, so Sherry's abstaining. Mike?
No.
Jane?
I'm kind of stuck because I'm not sure that I was here in the very beginning of this. Discussion. I don't know if there were hearings that happened before I.
When did you join the board?
As a full member in February.
Of this year.
Of this year.
Yeah, there were hearings.
There were hearings before that.
Then I abstained.
So we've got. Four members that can vote.
And wanted to know.
Well, this is just closing the public.
This is just closing the public hearing. I'm going to have to, I think I'm going to have to side with Mike. I, I, I'm not comfortable closing the public hearing yet. I want to see. I want to see the documentation. On the. Updated plans per Charlie's. Review. I would like to see a revised decommissioning plan based on our comments. I'm not going to touch the easement because it's obvious based on what we've been told. It's not our business, so we'll stay out of that.
Beyond getting the updated plan.
Beyond getting the updated plan.
Mike, you have a two-two vote right now.
We do. And no way to break it.
What does the bylaw say? It's have to have a majority, right, to close the public hearing? It fails because you don't have a majority.
So. Based on that, based on the vote, the public hearing remains open. Our.
So continue enumerating then what we're looking for. We've agreed, we're going to continue the.
We're going to continue the public hearing. We are looking for the revised decommissioning plan. We are looking for the updated site plan. Touching on the. The exact location of the poles in the easement area. The. Updating of.
Navigation.
The updating of the road construction once disturbed for the burying of the line. The specifics of burying the line as far as how deep shielding, public safety, things of that nature.
Rights of other people have these roots across there also. I think they should be in the. Easement, like.
Were there other property?
Or the some of the property owners they have that rights upon the easement is this.
Yeah, that use that easement.
Right, that was given to them by the state, I believe.
Yeah, when they closed twenty-five. And then on the, like I said, additionally on the decommissioning plan as far as dollars and cents, I'd like you to take a peek at that inflation. Factor that you used of two percent. And, and give that some, some consideration. The location of the line that's buried, we've talked about.
Mr. Chairman. Might I suggest that it would be very helpful if the applicant followed the, the NREL formula? In looking at decommissioning costs.
Certainly a tool that they can use. It's connect. Yeah, so, did I miss anything, Charlie?
No, fine.
Beat me up. All right, you got two weeks. And you're done.
No, you're doing good.
All right.
Can we get a date then?
That's, I was just going to get my handy dandy planner. I'd like, if it's at all possible. I'd like to get you guys off cycle from twenty-seven Charge Pond and one fifty to haunt it. Because it seems like these discussions are getting more and more lengthy and I don't, I, I really don't want those projects all on the same night.
Well, well, hopefully, it, it sounds like.
It sounds like y'all work is easier than this, so I was. January ninth?
Yeah, I mean, if we could have the December, I think. Get us, get us in and out, we would appreciate it.
Well, Jan, January ninth is the next meeting. There is nothing else in December. Yeah, I mean, half, you know, part of the board is, is away the last week of, of the year for, for holidays. And as it.
But we've got to get it done before February.
Yeah, right, Carl's.
Or, 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 or you're going to be down to three people voting.
Right. Yeah.
Well, that's for, not for the continuance. That's, we got to schedule the vote.
Right, so Gen- January ninth is really the first available meeting.
Thank you.
The team of motions will continue to January ninth.
We have a motion to continue to January nine, twenty twenty-three by Mike Depp T, seconded by Jane Gleason. All those in favor? Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
No.
Carl? Good vote, no, you're not going to hurt my feelings.
No, no, I, at this point, we, we. We have, we have, we, we have to continue because we didn't have enough to close the public hearing.
So that's an I in the chair votes.
I'm trying to figure my logic.
January ninth, we'll see you then.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Christmas, happy holidays, happy Hanukkah.
Carl's going to be away in March.
I'm too far, I'm too far. I'm going to miss both meetings in. What's the first meeting? What's the date of the first meeting in February? You have your calendar. Yeah, I'm gone.
One in Feb, oh, in February.
I'm going to miss both meetings in February, the ninth and the.
February thirteen and the twenty-seven.
Oh, thirteen and twenty-seven? I'll be back for the twenty-seventh.
All right, just. Real quick, I, I. All right, just real quick, I was promised this is going to be short. Hello? Yeah, we still got a meeting going on. Thank you.
Ms. Sheen, Ms. Sheen, I just wanted to. I just wanted to introduce myself. We had exchanged. Go ahead, Mike, continue with your meeting.
Request by the WRA.
Gentlemen.
Hello. Quiet, please. This is very annoying. Maybe I'll just call the meeting.
Excuse me, sir.
Yeah, we have about fifteen minutes.
I'm going to make this as quick. Ken promised me five minutes, didn't you, Ken?
Yeah, the redevelopment authority wants to present the downtown zoning proposal that they've come up with as a result of the urban renewal plan at the workshop next week for amendments that maybe in the upcoming town meetings.
Hey, five minutes starts now.
I wasn't going to present it now. I was going to present it next week when we have the workshop.
Oh, so even better.
So is your, just a clarification, so what you're going to ask next week is that we get all the bylaws updated to support the redevelopment plan by town meeting?
That's right.
By, 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 how long? By spring?
Yeah, we have to, we would have to submit them by when? Mid-February, late February?
Yeah, that's not going to happen.
That's not happening.
At upcoming town meetings, this could be in the fall as well.
Oh, okay, that's different. Okay. I thought you meant for spring town meeting. Okay, there's a lot of work to do. And as we heard testimony tonight, we've got to fix, well, we've made an attempt to fix five ninety and use table and article fifteen with respect to, but we didn't update article fifteen. Article fifteen is still a little bit of a mess. We did update section five ninety and use table to address Attorney Sheen's comments. Whether they effectively address it without updating article fifteen, I don't know.
No, article fifteen has to be updated as well, too.
I thought so. We just never got to that.
All right, so we can address that next week.
All right.
Next week.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that was, there's a lot of work.
Do it, Mike.
Wait, no, I want to know what we're going to do about Wareham Retail Management.
Where, where, where?
It's on the agenda, so.
Motion to June is not debatable.
Fine. Go ahead, take your, take your.
Hold on. I, I got, I got to agree with Carl. What are we going to do about Wareham Retail Management? They've, they've done the enclosures, but all the rest of the items on the list that Charlie had noted as being incomplete have not been addressed.
If they don't get it done by the twentieth, they're not going to get their victor's license for.
That's all I wanted to. But Chipotle and Starbucks will be without licenses. Have a what?
They're going to set down a recruiter tool.
And delve it down.
Would have to be. They're all on the same piece of property.
All right.
All right, so we've heard it. That, that will be it. Who's going to send them the notice that they're close, but they haven't hit the finish line yet?
So I suggest we add a line item on next week's agenda, not only to address Ken's urban renewal plan, but we need to add a line item.
Need an update on where they stand.
So we can take a vote, send to the select board.
Okay, so we do that? Can we add a line item?
Yeah, we do that too, yeah.
Okay. All right, Mike?
All right, done.
Second, all in favor? Sherry?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
Sam? Carl?
Nay.
You want to stay?
No, I'm not satisfied.
We're, we're out.